Did you go all in all, or did you just say?
I ran home.
You had a big deal ahead today. You gotta get what's coming under. This could be like a typical one. I could easily miss. I guess the question. Someone has to just... Yeah, I'd love them all to just party here and get out the poster. That's why I told you. Because that's kind of the best.
I hope. Okay, Council, I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Hi, Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Come out of executive session.
A motion, a second, to come out of executive session on our special meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, wish carried. I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you for your patience. Sorry for the slight delay in starting our meeting. But welcome to our city council meeting. For the record, it is Wednesday, November 7th. It's ten minutes, nine minutes after six. I'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVeard.
Here.
And councilmembers Mylum and Cavanagh are absent.
Item number two is our pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Troy Drake with Calvary Chapel. If you will please join us in the community invocation, or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us.
You bet, Mayor. Would you join me in prayer? Well, Lord God, in heaven, I just want to first acknowledge your grace. We thank you for your grace and the life that you've given all of us and the way that you have clearly expressed the way to eternal life. We appreciate you, God. We also appreciate this country that we live in, God, these elections that we've just had. I know, Lord, that you want people to live free. And, Lord, we just pray for the people that have been elected at the national and state and local level, that they would remember those things, God, and they would do it as unto you. Lord, you said that righteousness exalts the nation. And, God, I pray that that's who they look to. They look to you. And you would bless them, Lord. Give them lots of wisdom and that they would carry out their duties in a way that would serve the people. And, Lord, we also thank you so much for Meridian and what we have here. And it's such an awesome place. And we just pray for this group of people, the city council and the mayor, Lord, that you would help them to listen to the people and that you give them lots of wisdom to make the decisions that they need to do. And we appreciate them, God, and pray that you show them lots of grace. And so, I pray that you bless this meeting tonight and that we would honor you in all ways. And it's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We have a couple of changes. On the consent agenda, item O, we left a zero off. Should we, 300,000? We'll typo, so add the zero at the end of that. And item...
Eight.
H. When we get to that, that will be requested by the applicant for a remand back to P and Z. And then we're going to add an item 11. That'll be an executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74-2061A. And with those amendments, I move we adopt the agenda.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Mr. Clerk, anything under item five?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do, Cara Lilia has requested to address the council. Discussion topic is unsafe school walk zone by Hillsdale Elementary School.
Thank you. Carolyn.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Cara Lilia, and I live at 2122 East Morse Trail Drive in Meridian.
Thank you, Carol.
Can I introduce them as well?
If. They will each be providing comment. I'll ask them to do it as they come forward.
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I am here on behalf of hundreds of Sky Mesa, White Bark, and Black Rock children for our safety of our children.
Carol, can I ask you to get closer to the mic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm here on behalf of the children of these neighborhoods, hundreds of children, who have had a bus to provide transportation to Hillsdale Elementary for the last several years. Recently, they have put in other safety measures and taken the bus transportation away from our children. They, it recently was deemed a walk zone, and they are within the, more than the 1.5 miles. They have to, they can ride a bus, but less than 1.5 miles, they are within the walk zone. Our neighborhood is currently experiencing a tremendous amount of construction. We have nearly 300 new homes that are being built right now. The construction traffic of use on Taconic, where our children walk to school, is heavy. The construction workers speed through the road. They are oblivious to children walking down the road. There's thousands of homes in the area that feed into this connection between Eagle and Taconic. They are working while the kids are walking to school, and they are disruptive for the children. Once the children navigate through this heavy traffic area, they reach Eagle and Taconic, where there's a Hawk signal. It's a recently installed Hawk signal, and it's new to traffic. People are unaware that it's there, and they don't pay attention to it. They recently reduced the speed limit to 45 miles per hour. It was 50, and people are still unaware of the speed limit reduce. It was taken down two weeks ago. This week alone, so they have provided a crossing guard for us as a safety measure for our children walking between Eagle and Taconic. This week alone, I have driven my children to school because I don't feel that it's safe. There was, first day, no crossing guard. The next day, there was a crossing guard wearing a black hoodie who had no stop sign and no vest to identify her as a crossing guard. This is unsafe for our children. She can't be identified by children or traffic. The third day, the crossing guard was vaping in her car. Today, there was no crossing guard. It's so inconsistent, we cannot trust our children can safely cross Taconic Road on their way to and from school. The City of Meridian Comprehensive Plan ensures safe routes to school. Several of us have made repeated contacts through the proper channels, including the Hillsdale Elementary School President Kristi Baer, the ACHD, West Datas School District, and the Cascade Student Transportation. We have talked to all of these people repeatedly, trying to get something done to ensure a safer route to school. Because the school district have deemed our house in the walking, in the walk zone, we have kindergartners and first graders that are encountering life-threatening routes each day to and from school. We're convinced that a terrible accident may happen to our children, like our city's own accident that happened in Loosa Falls several years ago, when an eight-year-old boy was killed on his bike in the neighborhood. We don't want to be a case study. We want to find a way to stop this before it happens. During the planning of our community, this Meridian Southern Room Coalition testified under the assumption that busing would be eligible for all of the kids in our neighborhoods. It's no longer eligible. One of the Southern Room Coalition representatives, Susan Carnes, witnessed a near-miss accident where a child was riding his bike through the Hawk signal last week. A car came 50 miles an hour and slammed on their brakes and almost skidded into the child. This is just one scenario of what could happen.
Carol, I'm sorry, your three minutes are up. Does one of the other of you want to take it from there?
Hi, my name is Sarah Aguilera, and I live at 2003 East Morse Trail Drive.
Thank you, Sarah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. As the founder of our community Facebook page and the liaison to Meridian Police Department for our Neighborhood Watch Program, I was designated at the beginning of the school year when we first heard the bus would be removed and was successful in retaining the bus for what I was told would be until the sidewalk on the north side of Taconic was completed and a crosswalk was put in place. I have a photo. Mr. Coles, are you able to put that up?
If you use the mouse right there.
Oh, thank you. So, is that, can you see that? These photos demonstrate the newly added crosswalk between Taconic. And as you can see, it is very reminiscent of a speed bump, a normal, typical speed bump. There is in no way any indication to traffic or children that it's a crosswalk. There are no flashing lights, no reflectors, no signage at all. The signage that does currently exist is a sign put there for construction, an orange sign in the shape of a diamond that says "Bump," which is exactly what this looks like. It is not an effective crosswalk at all. I personally wrote ACHD about this, asking if they would consider reflectors and flashing lights, and was told that it was not a concern because our children are not walking to school in the dark. I think that this crosswalk is grossly negligent in providing a safe route to school for our children. And again, we are all here on behalf of many, many, many parents in our community who are really wanting to fight for a safer way to school. Our kids deserve it. And like Cara said, we don't want to be a case study. We don't want it to take something serious and definitely to get this addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah.
My name is Donice Murray, and I live at 2133 East Morse Trail Drive. My primary concern is just like the fellow moms up here, who are talking about the safety and welfare of our children. They are being asked to walk well over a mile to and from school each day, and that distance becomes an additional hardship and impossibility for children with various special needs. And I'm coming to you with that situation. My child has hypotonia, and that distance is far beyond what is capable. And we moved into a neighborhood that since the school opened, we have been serviced with a bus, and now that bus is being taken away. And an undue hardship and an unsafe situation is being presented to our children. So, do you want to close? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle McCumber. I'm at 2255 East Lodge Trail Court. I think, I think the number one priority that we're here for is that we just feel unsafe. And if there was a way, I don't think we're here to whine and complain about the mile and a half. I get it. Everybody's walked to school at some point in their lives. But I think the fact that our five-year-olds are being asked to cross Eagle when there could or couldn't be a crossing guard is really the concern. I think the Eagle Road aspect of it is the number one priority. I didn't even know until we were sitting here that the speed bump in the neighborhood was a crosswalk. I had no idea. There's nothing that, I just thought it was to slow the traffic down. But regardless, I think the number one priority is Eagle Road. I've actually crossed the street with my children on bike, and I've had the crossing guard just in chatting tell me that she has been in the middle of Eagle Road with the 20 mile an hour blinkers going, with the red solid people are crossing light, with her full crossing guard uniform, stop sign, in the middle of the road. And she's like, and I've had cars whizzing by me at 50 miles an hour. That, as a parent, makes me want to throw up. I looked at her and I said, what are you talking about? And she's like, I don't know what to tell you. She's like, there's the lights, there's the blinking lights, there's my sign, there's my outfit, and I have had cars whizzing by me. I don't know if it's on a daily basis, but regardless, I would never allow my child to walk or ride their bike without me present, just to sort of have more eyes. Nonetheless, I've also, in the past three, four weeks, as well as even since the beginning of the school year, when our kids did have a bus, witnessed no crossing guards at the three different allotted crossing Eagle, Taconic, and Stockingham. And there just isn't anyone there. I don't know if it's a problem with the school district, but it's a problem with me as a parent feeling unsafe. And I think that's what we're all here for.
Thank you. We appreciate you bringing it to this. Our future meeting topics, we can't have a discussion with you because it hasn't been posted for the agenda. But we will have our police department follow up with you and give you some ideas of what maybe we can help facilitate, and we'll take it from there. If it is an item that is placed on a future agenda, we will also let you know that as well. And certainly, council can request that additionally. So, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We appreciate your time and your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, there were two other individuals that had signed up. However, they referenced a public hearing later in the meeting. So, when we get to that item, we'll call them up at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We have added the extra zero on item 6O. With that previous amendment, I move that we approve the consent agenda as published, and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as amended. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, wish carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. We'll move to our action items. For those of you who are new this evening to the action item and public hearing process, I just wanted to give you an overview of what that public process is. It also is described in your agenda. We do have staff make the initial presentation for the public hearing, giving some background information and information about the application that is in front of the city council. The applicants then will present their, the details, and it was then open up to public testimony. We do ask that you provide, you keep your comments to three minutes. And on the screen that will be in front of you when you're at the podium, there is a little time clock on there, so you can kind of see what we see in terms of that time. At the end of public comment, the applicant has the final word. They are asked to respond to testimony and answer any questions that our city council might have. Then it really is open up to our council discussion to ask questions of staff, applicant, or any of those that provided testimony that they may need further information from. I will also let you know that the public record is in the agenda item on our website. There's, oftentimes, you see the tip of the iceberg here at the city council meeting, but there's a lot of information that, from former planning and zoning minutes, applicant comments, written comments, that city council has reviewed prior to coming to this meeting as well. So, with that said, I will go ahead and get into our action items. Action item 8A is a request for water and sewer services. Mr. Neri, are you providing that? Or Clint?
I believe it's Public Works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Clint.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, what you have in front of you is a request that was submitted to Public Works to provide water and sewer service to an unannexed property with no current annexation path, and it's located at 5233 West Franklin Road. Public Works reviewed this request, and water and sewer services currently reside in front of the subject parcel and are available to connect to this parcel. Public Works does recommend, and it's kind of outlined in the letter that we, that's in the packet and that we sent to the applicant, to work with the community development department to make sure they comply with all the ordinances and requirements of that department. And we had a few other concerns in the letter as well that we would like them to comply with prior to connecting to water and sewer services. So, with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Clint? Sorry.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Clint, the conditions you're referencing are the four in your memo?
Correct.
That's it? Okay. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just a question for legal. I don't, what's the mechanism to ensure consent to annex when contiguous is acted upon? It's one of the conditions, so how do you make sure that happens?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Borton. So, in the past, on these types of things, there's kind of two things happening here. One is, in the request for services, we will prepare an agreement that will include the requirement for annexation upon being contiguous to the city. So, we, but the piece that's missing that I think is a future discussion topic with the council is, in all other aspects of receiving city services, if you are annexable, you go through planning. Planning then requests from Public Works, is it serviceable? If you're not annexable, you go to Public Works to find it if you're serviceable, and you have no direction to go to planning. And so, it may be incompatible with future uses, and we need to be aware of it. It may be incompatible with the comp plan or ordinances or whatever. So, it, I think a future topic for the council will be to redirect our ordinances to put everything towards the planning, community development side with the input from Public Works still relevant as to whether it's serviceable or not. So, that's one piece of solving this for the future, because we have three to four of these come up yearly, where they're not annexable, but they want services now. And then, on this particular one, we will, as we've done in the past, we did one in the last year and a half or so off of Black Cat, just on the east side of Black Cat. It was a home that had a garage mechanic facility behind it. We required that, as soon as they were annexable to the city, they were required to annex. And we annexed them as part of that. So, we will create an agreement to trigger that when it is, when it is able to be done.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I could just speak on behalf of the community development department. So, the planning division manager and I discussed this this evening before we started the council meeting. And we would request that before you ratify any kind of agreement with the property owner, that they do submit their site plan and elevations to us so that we can bring back some considerations or some future DA provisions for you to take under consideration as you enter into this agreement with the property owner. This is part of our 10-mile interchange-specific area plan, so we do have a little bit of different standards out in that area, and we want to make sure we're on solid ground as we allow them to move forward and develop in the county.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
To accomplish that, is it appropriate to table this a week or two to allow that to happen? I don't know why we would approve something contingent upon that future review. Why not have the review happen?
Madam members of the council, Councilmember Borton, I think what you can do is direct that action to occur as we develop this agreement with the requestor to get that done and bring that agreement back in front of you, because we don't have an agreement yet.
Are we saying the same thing, Madam Mayor?
Sort of. I think we're just asking for that to be part of your direction, that we include the planning, the community development as we develop this agreement with Butte Fence to bring this forward.
Well, Council, do you need further information from the applicant or the requestor's representative? Or do you want this to come back in a different form on your agenda?
Madam Mayor, I mean, we're here. They've got something to say. I'd like to hear it.
Okay. Good evening, Becky. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
You already did.
I can give your address or your last name.
I think it should just be like, you know, typed out already. No, that's a joke. Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, business address 1029 North Rosario, Meridian. I'm representing Butte Fence on this particular application. I'd just like to tell the council, Butte Fence has been a business in the City of Meridian, just south of Fairview, for many, many years. Jared Bell, the owner of Butte Fence, has been, for the past two years, looking for a new site because they want to expand their facility, and their current location does not allow that. And so, I looked at multiple parcels for him to try to figure out if it could accommodate their needs, if it was annexable, serviceable. And so, we've gone through different parcels that they've passed on due to access issues, serviceability issues. Mr. Bell brought this particular parcel to me. We kind of evaluated it. We met with the staff. We did do a pre-application conference. It's quite... It's quite obvious it is not contiguous with the city limits. However, you do have sewer and water facilities that are right in front of this property. This property is designated to go into that sewer shed where that service line is in front of it in Franklin Road, and water is available. We did receive an email from Warren Stewart saying that he had evaluated it and had determined that with the council's approval, the parcel could be serviced. However, obviously, we cannot be annexed due to the fact that we are not contiguous. I know that the council has granted serviceability to another property for a industrial-type use north on Black Cat from Franklin. And so Mr. Bell is agreeable to submitting elevations. We talked to staff in length about the 10-mile specific area plan, the requirements of, obviously, that their office be oriented to Franklin. We provide landscaping, we provide articulation. The manufacturing facility will be south of Franklin, behind the office facility. The yard will be even south of that. The site's six acres, so it gives them room to expand in the future and continue their operation within the city of Meridian. And that has been their goal from the very beginning. They said, you know, Jared told me, I don't want to leave Meridian. We love be, having our business in Meridian. I don't want to have to go to Nampa or elsewhere. We just need to find the right parcel. And so based on the configuration, access, we've met with ACHD. They will provide access to Franklin. And like I said, Warren has indicated that it is serviceable. So therefore, we submitted application to you for a waiver so that the city council would allow us to have sewer and water facilities, and then agree to compliance with the 10-mile area-specific plan and its design review guidelines that are applicable, and enter into an agreement with the city that at such time as the property is contiguous to the city limits, that we will connect. And we will pay all applicable fees for hookups and that apply to the city. But we will have to go to the county. I did do a pre-app with Ada County. Ada County said, you know, it's mixed employment, low-density employment. They would allow us to go to an industrial zone because they felt it was in compliance. Light fabrication is exactly what we have with the office as an accessory use. So the county said we are supportive of this application, however, do not submit to us until the city of Meridian reviews the waiver for central sewer and water. The past sites that we looked at would have required like a septic system or a well, and I told Jared, you know, that's just really, you know, for a commercial industrial-type use, it's better off if you could find a parcel that has central services to it, that has the ability to be annexed into the city and be served by Meridian Services in the long term. So that's what we're before you today. I mean, this is kind of their last-ditch effort. He's exhausted all other avenues, and he wants to stay in Meridian because it's important to Butte Fence, to be a part of Meridian, and continue to be a part of Meridian. So we ask that you support this waiver and request that your attorneys draft an agreement, and we will submit, we have elevations, we have site plans, that we will attach to that agreement so that staff can be assured that we meet all the requirements of the 10-mile specific area plan and its design guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Counsel, any questions for Becky?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Becky, I appreciate the detail, I think that's very helpful. Procedurally, do you think it would be appropriate to continue? I'm supportive of what you're asking for. In light of all of the conditions and processes you've just described, would it be appropriate to make the determination on the request at the same time we're approving the terms of that final agreement? The devil is in those details that we would need to see. You've described them very well. Doesn't seem like it would delay any part of the process, but it would allow us to make a, kind of a more holistic decision on the waiver and the terms and conditions that go with it all at the same time. The reason I bring up that concern is if we approve, for example, a waiver right now, then we see terms and conditions that maybe they go sideways.
Sure.
So.
Jared?
He is acceptable to a deferral in order to provide additional information and have an opportunity for your attorneys to draft acceptable agreement that gives the council that comfort level with moving forward with the waiver. Yes, sir.
And I think you could probably do it concurrently?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, and that's the thought is, I don't, I don't think it creates any additional delay because you couldn't take conduct until the agreement was done anyway.
No, sir. We cannot submit to Ada County. They told us not even to submit until we had something in writing from the city of Meridian stating that an agreement is in place.
Okay. All right. That's helpful.
Anything further from counsel?
Madam Mayor, is there a ballpark timeframe that you think would facilitate that discussion and drafting?
Madam Members of the council, since next week would be tomorrow, it would probably be the following week at the earliest.
The 20th or 27th, perhaps?
Yes. No, the 20th?
20th?
Yeah.
Does that work, Bill?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it'll have to work, because Caleb's not here to say if it's going to work for him. But yeah, that should be sufficient. I think, looking through the packet here, it looks like we do have the site plan and elevation, so if we get that in front of the team, we can certainly get working on that and work with Legal on that and bring something back to you on the 20th.
And Madam Mayor, we did submit a site plan and elevations to the staff with our waiver request, but my understanding from Mr. Bell is that they have since refined that, and so we can give Bill even more additional information prior to the 20th.
And that was in our packet, so we did have the initial one and look for the update. So the 20th works?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jared. Mr. Neri, do we need an official motion to put it on the 20th?
That would probably be better, Madam Mayor, sure.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move that item 8A, the request to provide water and sewer services to unannexed property, be continued to November 20th to come back to us for final decision, along with the agreement that was described in the meeting and the terms and conditions that Ms. McKay had set out, that will be drafted and provided for our review.
Second?
I have a motion and a second on item 8A. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt? Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Item 8B is a final plat on H. 2018-0114. Staff?
Madam Mayor, counsel, staff did receive a response from the applicant in agreement with the staff report after the timeline allowed for the consent agenda. Would the council like me to go through it, or is that, is that good for you?
I think if the applicant agrees with staff comments, counsel, any questions regarding that? Would you like staff to walk through it? I think we're, we're good? If you're good, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve item 8B, the final plat, H. 2018-0114.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 8B. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt? Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I meant to do this earlier, but item 8H, which will be continued, it's kind of buried down deep in the agenda. If it would be okay, we could take up item 8H, open the public hearing, continue it, or, excuse me, approve or remand, or at least take action on the remand and check that off the list. Need to amend the agenda to do so, or just take that item up?
We can take that item up. Item 8H is H. 2018-0057. I will open this public hearing, the request has been to remand this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any member of the public that is here on this item? Okay. I know the applicant is here. Counsel, any questions on this request for remand? If not, I would need a motion to remand this 2018-0057 back to planning and zoning.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Seeing that nobody is present here to provide any testimony on this application, and it is a request from the applicant for this remand, I would move that we remand item H. 2018-0057 back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have a motion and a second to remand item 8H to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Before I do that, Madam Mayor, I know that I'd spoken with planning, and they did have a request to have this project re-noticed for when it is remanded back to the commission. Just wanted to make sure that when we set that hearing, that that is included, and whether or not that comes at the cost of the city or the applicant to re-notice the project for the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing.
I would imagine it is at the cost of the applicant. Does that need to be included in the motion? I think just because you stated it on the record. If counsel agrees.
Motion would so include.
Second agrees. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Will you please call roll?
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, item 8C is the findings and facts and conclusion of law for H. 2018-0075. Counsel, in front of you, you do have the findings for this. Are there any comments from staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel. The findings for this project were placed on the regular agenda for counsel's review tonight in order to ensure the accuracy of such prior to approval. Two different versions of the findings were prepared, one from staff's interpretation of the motion, and another from the school district's interpretation of the motion. We were not clear what counsel's intent was. So the findings that you have before you from the school district should be labeled as such at the top. The school district did submit revised, revised context site plan and a revised conceptual roadway plan that depict the east-west local street stubbing to the Flowers parcel and an easement for future right-of-way dedication over the school property to the east of the Flowers parcel to the Woodside property, which does leave a gap in between that relies on easement from the Flowers to complete the road, as you can see right here in this little area between the purple and the green. If this was counsel's intention in their motion, then they should approve the findings marked with the school district. If the intent of the council was for the school district to provide a local street to the Flowers property with an easement to the Woodside property across the school property for connection to the north-south Collector Street in its entirety, staff is recommending the other set of findings are considered. If that is the case, to ensure the intent of this condition is realized, staff recommends the condition is modified to include the text there in your hearing outline. Further, an easement shall be provided over the portion of the subject property to the Woodside Avenue Investor LLC parcel for future right-of-way dedication and construction of a public street from the Woodside property to the north-south Collector Street. Staff was very confused with the motion, so if you have any, if you have any questions for staff, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, it's all you.
Thank you, Sonya. Yes, Mr. Borton.
So you referenced findings of fact, which we've got an individual, single version of that. We have multi, two versions of the DA.
Yes.
Not the findings.
An exhibit to the findings.
Okay.
The exhibits.
So the language you were reading just a moment ago, what's the, give us the section you're reading from so we can track.
Sections, excuse me, yes. Sections 1.1.8 were noted by the applicant, and 2.1.6, which is now shown as 2.1.5. I'm sorry, there was a discrepancy in the numbering. So the ones before you will be 118 and 215.
Counsel, any other questions for staff?
Just as a side note, Madam Mayor, Public Works was okay with the applicant's change to 2.1.5.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam, Sonya, so it just comes down to whether we intended for an easement to be provided for, the rest of the way eventually when it's crossed the canal, right? Okay.
I was under the impression at the hearing, and I made a comment on the record, that I was very concerned with counsel approving the plan as shown without some kind of resolution on how that connection was going to take place to the Woodside property. Counsel ended up moving forward with the motion without that clarification, and this is what we ended up with. So I, that's, that's the big issue, is did you intend for this connection to be able to happen in its entirety? Or did you intend for this gap to be left here?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
If I'm remembering the motion, I believe that we were, the motion was to stop at that property line and provide a stub, if I'm remembering correctly.
So it was, it did create a land law parcel.
Madam Mayor, follow up. So basically, if I'm remembering correctly, maybe Mr. Borton should be speaking instead of me because he made the motion, but I think that we were going to stop right where that green, where the green stops, and create a stub street. And then we left open the negotiating part between Flowers parcel and the applicant and Woodside about how they're going to connect to the purple. That, that's the open part that was never discussed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't believe the motion specifically mentioned the purple line. However, the bulk of the discussion was whether we should force the district to build the bridge or not, understanding that that's probably the route that the road is going to take, and it appeared that the district didn't have any complaint about the road going there, they just didn't want to construct the rest of the road or the bridge. So while it wasn't specifically mentioned in the motion, I totally believe that the intent was to provide the easement should the road need to be crossed, the canal at that point, and take place on that property rather than on the Flowers property.
Provide the easement, but not to have to construct the Provide the easement, but not to have to construct the bridge or the roadway?
Right.
Okay. So, as the motion maker, Mr. Borton?
Madam Mayor, not my favorite way to try and address this.
Nor mine.
Frankly, I think the minutes should reflect exactly. I think the version that you've marked, "School District", and it's depicted on the right, is the version that was approved at the meeting. And I agree with Mr. Burnt. I think that's what he was saying as well. That's my recollection.
Yeah, so it would be rehearing an issue that was decided with the motion as it was. So, it was essentially creating a landlord parcel. In some ways, some might frame it that way.
Without the easement.
If that's the counsel's decision, then that would be the exhibit to the findings marked WASD.
Madam Mayor, if those are the conditions that reflect the motion and decision that was made that evening, then those are the conditions that should go forward and be approved tonight.
And I think what staff is saying is it wasn't clear to them. So, Mr. Neri, what options do we have in coming to a conclusion on this?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, in reviewing the discussion, that's why there's two alternatives. In reviewing it, Planning did raise that concern. I would agree with Councilman Borton. I think what I heard, and listening to the hearing and watching the video of it, is what the school district has proposed is what the motion was that was approved. There was a substitute motion to do what is the alternative here, and that did not receive a second. And therefore, the vote was as this depiction is. That the requirement was, and I believe I asked the question, is the requirement to build the roadway to the edge of the property of the school district? And the answer was yes. So, I believe what the school district has recommended as what they believe the findings were, was what I heard. But again, it wasn't very clear. So, it really is on all of you. Is this what you believe you made the motion on, based on what we reviewed? Again, it's very muddy, the way it was. We tried clarifying it that night, and even as we looked at it again last week, it's still a little murky. But it's your motion, and that's why we're asking. You get to approve the findings. Is this what you intended? If what you said, Councilmember Borton, what I heard was what is on the screen, is that portion that requires then someone to acquire that easement is not on the school district to do it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Palmer?
So, my substitute motion I had made, imagining this as the revised conceptual roadway plan here as Councilman Borton's motion intent, and my substitute motion was to require that the district construct the bridge and provide the easement. That's why I was happy to approve it otherwise, because the only thing that was being taken out of my substitute motion was the bridge with the rest of it. So, that's my interpretation of the intent and reality of motion, even though it may not have been specifically said, the easement. I feel like that was the intent all along.
Madam Mayor, may I? Staff took that to mean stub to the Flowers property with an easement to the north and over to the Woodside property. And that may have been incorrect, but that was what staff understood. That is not what's depicted on this plan before you. So, that was the issue of clarification for staff. And that's the reason for my comment at the last hearing was if... To avoid this.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
I feel like we're getting in the weeds a little bit. It's... I don't... I don't know if it's appropriate, although I would love to discuss it more, but I don't feel it's maybe appropriate to discuss anything that was outside the bounds of what the motion was and what was seconded and what was voted upon. So, if the minutes... If there was the word that said easement, then it should be included. If not, then it probably wasn't.
I think that's the crux of the problem, though, is because it wasn't specific to the motion, that gave the gray area that we're trying to get clarification on. So, you're voting on the correct findings.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Okay, Sonya, so the green and purple is what the district is proposing? And, okay, I thought they weren't wanting to provide the purple line, the easement. So, the problem is where we're just saying whether they need to go northwest a little bit.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer. The plan before you was the plan that was shown at the hearing that night. As you can see, there's kind of a stub that goes up over here. So, either way, there was an easement across the school district property to the Woodside property. The entire issue is, as you can see here, this doesn't cross the Flowers property necessarily. This plan here is reliant on an easement, a right-of-way dedication across the property that's outparced to this application.
Madam Mayor? I think the only real option we have is to table it a week and go review the minutes and listen to the audio. It'd be inappropriate for us to try and, in essence, rehear it right now. If you're of concern that it wasn't necessarily clear, then we've got to go review those minutes and make that determination.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Now that I really understand what I'm saying here. To me, it's a no-brainer, because why would we have any interest in there being an easement at all? It's kind of pointless there where it is if Flowers has got to be on board anyway. So, if the intent is to have an easement connecting to the northern property, the point is that easement accesses the road that's going to be constructed. And that's what we were talking about, is they didn't want to build the bridge. So, okay, at least then provide the easement to connect to the road that you are going to build, so that Flowers doesn't have to be a relevant part of being able to connect to anywhere. So, I am extremely comfortable in approving or a version that pushes that easement all the way to and over the canal there.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
I would love there to be a bridge built too along the way. But unfortunately, that's not what was discussed in that. I don't believe in that motion. And so, if there's confusion, I mean, we could talk about this all night long, and, you know, there's a bunch of people out here waiting to talk, you know, listen and to discuss other applications. I'm with Mr. Borton. We just need to listen to the minutes and know exactly what was said and what we need to do. And I think it's the only way that we can... I'm sure that we have other council members here that would like to pipe in as well. So, I agree that we probably should table this, listen to it, figure it out, and make a decision next week. That's the prudent thing to do.
Okay, I would need a motion to continue this to a date certain.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
I move that we continue this... What is it, 8C?
Mm-hmm.
Until next Tuesday to discuss further the conclusions that we find on the audio in relation to what was said during this application or the motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue this. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Clerk?
Just to be clear, we don't typically handle land use items on a workshop Tuesday. However, it is council's purview to do that if council wishes to do that. But just as an FYI, next week is the workshop meeting.
Thank you. And it is kind of a finding of fact, and we'll see where next week takes us. Okay, so the motion was to continue item 8C to next week. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All ayes. And so, I assume counsel will have the opportunity to review the minutes and come back with your opinions next week. Okay, item 8D is a public hearing for H. 2018-0042. This request was for the sole purpose of reviewing and considering conditions of approval in the matter of the request for modification to the development agreement. Mr. Neri, is there anything you would like to add to open this for discussion?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, when we continued this a couple of weeks ago, staff had prepared conditions that could be considered for inclusion into the modified DA. There was an opportunity now for the applicant to provide input about those conditions, because they hadn't seen them for a very long period before that meeting. They have now provided, it is in the record, and their feedback in regards to that. There is also another memorandum that was provided today by Josh Leonard and representing some of the neighbors in this area as well. What we discussed when this was continued was this was continued not to reconsider the decision, but submitted to reconsider the conditions. So, any testimony that's taken is only relevant to the conditions that are being proposed, not to the decision that's already been made. So, if whatever public input there is, it has to be narrowed to that. And that was all that was continued for. And you have, again, staff's original conditions, and you have both the applicant as well as at least one counsel that has provided some feedback on those specific conditions.
Okay, since this is the first type of public hearing of this kind, how do we go about it?
I think, Madam Mayor, I think from the staff's standpoint, if you want, Sonya can walk through what was provided. I think we just... I thought we discussed that two weeks ago, but maybe I'm wrong. It gets a little fuzzy after a while. We can walk through what was submitted by staff and what the basis of that was. And then, the opportunity for the applicant to then comment, and then the opportunity for others to comment. I think, again, as long as the comments are narrowed to just these conditions, and that's all we're discussing tonight, I think that would be the gist of the hearing.
And it was brought back because the staff report was for denial, and so, we had not done the evaluation for conditions of approval, which is what that discussion is about tonight.
Yes.
Okay. So, Sonya, I'll turn this over to you if you want to walk us through what those conditions of approval were.
Madam Mayor, counsel, you have a copy of the staff-recommended DA provisions, modified provisions before you?
Yes. Maybe it's easier to ask counsel if they have any questions regarding...
I think so, Madam Mayor. There's a long list of recommendations.
Counsel, at this point, any questions for staff on the staff recommendations? Is the applicant here? I know you're not the applicant to the topic that is being discussed on conditions of approval, but you are the applicant of the proposed modifications. So, if you want to walk us through some of your concerns about the staff conditions that have been proposed.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mike Magrino. I'm the managing member of Timber Creek Recycling LLC. My business address is 7695 South Locust Grove, Murdy, Idaho, 83642. Madam Mayor, members of counsel, I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to go over some of these recommendations with you tonight. I'm pretty proud of our team that we've kind of put together with staff and trying to put a combination together that pleases the neighbors and is something I think the city will be pretty happy with. So, this is kind of our landscaping plan we put together. One of the things that staff recommended was a 10-foot berm. And if you look in the red up there on this little corner right here, we did just that. That berm will be 10 feet higher than centerline of the road, which I think is a requirement. And we tapered it down, kind of down in this area right here, because we have some structures here and some easements with the irrigation district that we really couldn't, you know, keep it at that height and width. It's a three-to-one slope, so we kind of tapered that down. We also added an additional berm here along this tree line. And we did that so we had two forms of berms and buffers. And that tree line is kind of going around the entire perimeter of the property. This berm right here is 10 feet higher than centerline of the road right here. This one here is not. It's only four feet. And we did that because we wanted to kind of keep it safe for truck traffic going in and out, to kind of have a visual both left and right for a safety issue. One of the other recommendations from staff was the crushed asphalt and dustless material. We agreed with that. We thought that was a very good idea. So, we put kind of a crushed asphalt roadway in here around the retail area and our offices, and where most of the traffic will be going around. But we did not want to put the dustless material kind of around in this area where the recycling happens, nor did we want to take out the 4,000-gallon tank. We felt like the dust or the wood material gets down on the floor of the ground, and it kind of becomes a dusty material that has to be watered. So, we didn't really see the point. We've seen other sites that did this, and it gets immediately covered up, and you can't even see any of that there. So, we felt like it was kind of a moot point. I'm probably going to turn it over to my attorney for the rest of the remainder.
Mayor, council members. Justin Cranny, Holly Troxell, 877 Main Street, Boise, Idaho. Thank you for having us today. It's been... We're grateful for the additional opportunity to come before you with additional time to review the conditions. It was kind of a surprise at the last hearing to have those and not really had time to contemplate and think about the impact they may have on the proposed use of the recycling property. Having spent more time, we met with city staff and the city attorney to talk through some of the conditions, some of the real concerns we had about these conditions and how they would or would not work. To start off, just run through some of the highlights. I mean, I submitted a memorandum which outlines the majority of our arguments, but a couple are worth mentioning in detail. The first is the 10-year limitation. We were quite surprised to see that limitation, specifically because that was extensively discussed by city council and ultimately rejected in the approval. As it was a very key point in the approval, as it was... We feel that having the condition added questions the approval itself. And as such, we really dispute having it added, because it will go towards the approval of the actual development agreement. The nuisance language that was added, we understand the nuisance obligations apply. We don't feel it's appropriate to add it to the development agreement. Should the council feel they would like it there for informative purposes, so that people reading will know that it does apply, we have proposed some language that we believe will fit with both the spirit of the nuisance law and also protect our interests. As for the jurisdictional question, we're fine with having any entity that has jurisdiction, has jurisdiction. The DA, amended DA, will not change that. If they have jurisdiction, it's there. If they don't, it's there. What we did not want was to have the city put in the position of having to potentially review, interpret, and enforce a rule or regulation of, say, the EPA. I don't think you want to do that. We're fine with complying with it, to the extent the EPA requires compliance. So, in discussion with the city council, what we pulled out of our meeting was, listen, if there's a rule or regulation that's enforced, you comply with it, great. If it's a rule or regulation, the EPA, for example, has no interest in pursuing against this use, we're not going to be the one to take that step. So, the proposed revisions, try and clarify that point and bring that point out. As for the landscaping, just to clarify what Mike said, when we met with staff, they said, listen, you know, maybe a good compromise here is what the city requires next to... listen, you know, maybe a good compromise here is what the city requires next to state highways is a ten-foot berm above center line of the adjacent highway. Well, Mike, as required as part of the Tier Two designation, has to put berms essentially around a majority of the recycling area. So he went out and shot it. We're happy to have people go out and verify that, but a large portion of the existing berm does meet that requirement. So it's in compliance with city code at this point. Where it does not, landscaping will go in to make sure that that is also screened. Returning to the dust abatement, again, it was, we were surprised to see the whole removal of the proposed dust abatement. What's proposed, as Mike stated, would remediate and keep the dust issues to a minimum. Putting down asphalt surface as in the proposed conditions would require not only on the roads and the driveways, but also everywhere there's driving, which would include where the grinding goes on, which would in essence cause the dust to fall on that, which the water would not be able to get properly wetted down and keep it wet long-term, because if it's on asphalt in the summer, that water will dry it really fast, create more dust issues.
Madam Mayor? Justin, I don't want to interrupt, but I don't remember anything that stated anything about asphalt. Was there, I mean, does it have to be asphalt?
It doesn't have to be asphalt, but...
Didn't we give them multiple options as to... I don't remember even asphalt being one of the options against... Can I leave it?
I don't know, and that's the problem with not having conditions of approval, is you don't know specifically what you need to have a discussion on. We do have an ordinance in the city that addresses that we have to have dustless surfaces, and pavement is usually always recommended, so...
So you're correct, though. It didn't only require asphalt.
Right.
There was a list of potential dustless materials, but as Mike pointed out, gravel, rock chips, plant vegetation, A, the plant vegetation will not survive, B, the gravel, et cetera, will get buried. It just, the water is the best way to remediate the dust and keep the impact down. So we're, as Mike stated, the proposed language, the condition that we are submitting says we will do the dustless material on the entrance, on the roads around the offices, and into the retail area. For the balance, they will stay with the wetting or the water trucks, the sprinklers, et cetera, to keep the dust down.
There's a landfill in eastern Idaho that lays down a dustless material, and they have a lot of dust from their trackout. Now, we will have conditions in there for erosion control and, you know, plans for controlling trackout, but, you know, if you have your equipment going over, run over compost and different things, you're gonna, it's gonna be everywhere. So you're just only gonna want to water it down instead of trying to, you know, put a dustless material down and have a future problem.
Just one last point I think is worth bringing up. The disposal, one of the conditions was drafted in a way that, if strictly read, could essentially prohibit the uses granted under the amended development agreement. Essentially said you can't bring recycled materials to be disposed of on the property. Or processed, and so, or buried, I'm sorry, that's the word, was buried. Well, the materials being brought in, for example, leaves, they're being processed and potentially will be buried because they're a soil amendment. And so that condition simply did not work with what the approved amended development agreement allowed. So we have agreed that there'll be no burning or incinerating, but that the recycled, process recycled materials could be buried, and my mind went blank, I apologize.
Talk about the old, the equipment?
Oh, no. So the language is in paragraph twelve. So with that, I think the memorandums provides kind of our position and proposed conditions that Timber Creek would find, or as proposing finds acceptable and would be happy to add as conditions to the amended development agreement. I stand for any questions you may have.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burt?
One question that I had, Justin.
Yes.
So in the memo, in section four...
Which one?
It states that, says the recycled materials both before and after, this is section four, did I state that? I apologize if I didn't. Recycled materials both before and after processing may be stored on the recycling property and on the balance of the property. So what is the balance of the property? What's that?
The property is defined as everything the amended development encovers. It's the portion north and south of the recycling area.
So we're not talking about like another, because I know the McGurdios own and use other, we're just talking about like maybe another spot within this?
Yeah, so a pile of compost will sit out on the field just north, for example, of the recycling area. So if you look at the map that's up, there's that blue line on the northern edge. It might sit on the other side of the canal, just a pile of compost.
Madam Mayor, but within the blue, within the confines of what you're, with what you're representing, though, right? You're not going to go beyond that?
We're not going to process beyond that, so like if I want to apply compost to my fields to the north, I want to be able to do that. And if I amend it to just this, then I wouldn't be able to apply it.
Madam Mayor? I, you know, applying your compost on your field is fine. What I have issues with is a big pile of whatever that's outside the compost, with outside the confines of what we're talking about. So if you're applying the compost to better your fields and your farming, that's, I don't, I personally have a problem. I think it's fantastic, but to put like a big pile of leaves or something that's outside of the berm area that's being protected, you know, from passerby's or from homeowners that are nearby, I think that wouldn't be appropriate.
I agree. I agree. So we could limit to just processed material or just limit to applying as a soil amendment of something of that nature would be fine.
So what you're saying is that we need to make an amendment to section four saying that only recycled material will be used within your farming, you know, applying it to better your farming needs, not a storage facility of excess waste that may be used in future recycling.
Okay. For this property, so I'd still be able to store it on my feedlot for storage for bedding, so when it's winter time, I can still store it and use it on site, right? Yeah, it's further north. I just don't want to get into a thing where, you know, I misstate it or one thing or another, because we do store a bunch up there for immediate use.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't mind not doing it around that property. So the property at hand, I don't mind not storing outside that blue line, that's fine, but up there at the feedlot, I prefer to have my mulch right there.
Madam Mayor? As it currently stands, you're not going to be adding to the northern property with bigger piles of whatever. It's just what you currently do.
What is currently allowed in your DA, so why call it out at all?
Say that again?
If it's already being done and it's currently part of the conditions that you had prior to, or when you anned it, then why are we changing the language?
We don't, we don't have to. It's just one of those conditions that the, if the mayor and council wants to, you know, adjust for surrounding neighbors, think that might be a negative impact on them, we're here to kind of work with you to make a, you know, a fair deal for everybody. But yeah, currently our DA says we can stockpile, you know, unground, ground, doesn't matter, anything on the section of the property. So we, you know, how we've been operating is we were going to keep everything processed in the confines of the recycling area, and then once it's processed and ready to go, we're going to have the option to extend it out. But if we don't want to, if you guys don't want to do that, we don't have to. It's not like we're lacking for space on this property here.
Madam Mayor? I don't have a problem at all with what you're doing on the north. You know, those tortillas, as we were talking about, where you put the tortillas and you recycle that into like, you know, better feed for your animals? No big deal. That's been going, I believe, Madam Mayor, you've been doing that for a long time.
Yeah.
No big deal. But that has to do with your operations, with your farming, with your ranching, not your recycling. I guess my only concern is leaving piles of whatever that will be in a different location other than what's specified for future recycled use that you may or may not be selling or using in your business.
Okay, can I get a little more clarification on that? So you're saying you, so like, let's say the example of my cattle bedding that's stored right up there at the feedlot, ready to go when it's wet. Yeah, up there on another completely section of property, up on fifty-nine eighty-five South Locust Grove.
I know, familiar.
That'd be the only thing, or you don't want me to store my mulch up there for my bedding there? Is that what you're wanting to do, or?
If it, Madam Mayor, if it relates to your farming...
Yeah.
And your ranching...
Yeah.
That's what you currently do.
Yeah.
No problem.
Yeah.
But as it relates to your new business that you're creating...
Oh, yeah, no.
That's what I'm talking about.
I agree, a hundred percent. Yep, this will remain down here.
Yeah, let's just keep the comments about the property that this application or DA modification is about, because I don't know what you just talked about, what that property is. And I think that that really colors this conversation, because now I'm curious to where that is in relationship to this, and it has nothing to do with this modification.
It doesn't. It's a feedlot operation that operates. We feed cattle there, we farm there, it's where we, all of our feed goes that we harvest, it goes to that location, we feed cattle, and...
And that's all annexed as well and under its own DA?
Yes, correct.
And you're not intensifying the use of that?
Nope, no.
Madam Mayor, they spoke about this in the original, I remember talking about the tortillas and stuff, you know, in a past presentation, and so I don't think what we're talking about is anything new.
No.
Maybe forgotten, but nothing new.
Mr. Neri?
Madam Mayor, members of council, and I think it's, I think it's okay. I mean, I don't think we should go further afield than we are. I think we're just trying to make sure we separate the existing use for, towards this expanded use.
Right.
And I think that's where council member Burt was going, is that we just want to make sure we're not going to spill over into the existing uses with this expansion. And so I think that's where the separation, we were trying to draw the line between, not redefine it or reopen it to other discussion.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have David Bennett signed up, would like to address the council on this issue.
Good evening. If you will, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is David Bennett, one three nine eight East Mallory Lane, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you, David.
Great, thank you, Mayor, council, first responders, police, thank you for what you do as well. My wife and I just recently moved here a few weeks ago from out of state.
Pull that up a little closer? Thank you.
Yes, my wife and I moved here recently, a few weeks ago, and live just a few miles down the road, and I'm very concerned about what I'm seeing going on here, especially with concern of regulation. I'm the president and CEO of Applied Science and Technologies Incorporated, ASTI. We're an environmental company that does environmental modeling and simulation and monitoring for the Department of Defense, DHS, FEMA, and EPA. We are one of the most heavily regulated industries in the world, and my concern is without the proper regulation being provided here, we will create some existing problems that will impact this area in the future. And I strongly recommend that the council adopt what the staff is trying to do with regulations and listen to the community, because I think we're at a great risk of creating a future problem that may be impacting health and the welfare of this community. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Patty Hagler would like to address the council.
Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Patty Hagler, seventy-two hundred South Locust Grove, Meridian.
Thank you, Patty.
I support adding operating conditions to mitigate the negative environmental effects caused by the industrial operation in residential area. However, code enforcement officers have told us they can't enforce conditions in terms of a development agreement, and they can't enforce city codes because they see the operation as agricultural. So what I'm asking is that language be added to confirm that code enforcement will enforce the conditions of, that are included in the development agreement, and confirm that it's an industrial operation, so it is not exempt for ag. So I'm asking that language be added. I did send a letter that addressed conditions in detail, but just to touch on a few. The termination date condition, I agree, it's critical to define a termination of the industrial approval to allow the residential development to occur in this residential zoning. At the last hearing, statements were made by council members that termination would naturally happen with development, and Mike McGurdio was asked if he owned the property within a thousand feet of the industrial operation, because that's the distance that issuance of a certificate of occupancy would terminate operations. He responded, no. However, the fact is McGurdio family does own all the property within a thousand feet of the operation. So the effect is that they have complete control over when residential development will happen in this area of the city that's zone, are for zoning, and it's next to the city park. As long as they're profiting from this industrial operation, they will not pursue residential development. So to mitigate this control, I request the termination date be revised to five years, which is more compatible with the targeted residential development plan of the city, because that's the only way this is going to terminate. The comment was also made that industrial operation expansion was good for the residential area because the regulation was at a higher level through DEQ. But DEQ only regulates dust and odor pollution, so it's important that city code enforcement have conditions for the visual and noise, because they're the only ones that enforce it. Pertaining to the visual pollution condition, I support the requirement of sufficiently blocking the view of the facility and stored materials. However, this is going to require a solid structure. Trees are not going to be tall enough or dense enough to sufficiently block that view year-round. So I request that the solid structure requirement be in place, and landscaping, blended trees be required on the outside of that to make it aesthetic to the area. Currently, these junk piles are very visible from the front of my property, and they go way above that ten-foot berm. So when visitors come to my house, they see them and ask what it is. The other thing that came up is this mentioned, this, everything changes all the time with this application. This mentioned that piles would be put north of the canal. That isn't anywhere near the feedlot, and that is a whole new thing, and that would be completely outside the berm, and it would be much more visible. Is that my bell?
Thank you. Thank you. Chief, can you, and that's Chief Levy, can you tell us that if you have any concerns about this DA agreement, and if there's anything you feel that you can't enforce?
Madam Mayor, I talked to the lieutenant that reviewed this case. He's informed us that code enforcement has provided legal all their comments and addressed those with legal. We'll enforce anything that we legally can enforce. So I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Neri for maybe some clarifications on those discussions that's been occurring between his office and my office.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, so these new, these additional conditions were developed with both with planning and with code enforcement and trying to create that specificity. The concern in the original development agreement is it related to things like truck trips and things like that that are really very difficult. Here, we're talking about more specifics that can be dealt with. There are issues that come up that are much more complicated, and they are everywhere in the city, not just for this property. Noise and types of complaints are very difficult to address, no matter where they are. So that's a common complaint that code enforcement has to deal with is noise. But here, we tried to create some things that were much more concrete. Berm heights, the type of things and locations of where they can be, the time period that this can operate, those kinds of things. The reason for the... The, the reason for the recommendation of including those provisions regarding nuisance and such is it provides an additional tool to the city in addition to code enforcement, rather than creating that the code is the exclusive remedy, which is what was being requested by the applicant. The reason staff had requested to include in the DA was you have both the code to use, and there's a standard for that in the criminal court, but if it's also part of the DA, that's an additional tool that the city has to enforce these provisions that has a different legal standard. So that was the reason why it was included in the DA, was because there's two methods in which enforcement could occur, and it really depends on the severity of violation or the complaint. Same thing with the requirements of complying with the other agencies. City isn't in the business of, of regulating other agencies or enforcing their regulations, but we certainly have the ability to know if other regulations are being violated and using that as a method to use enforcement of our own development agreement. So it isn't the intent of the city to enforce DEQ or EPA or anybody else's regulations, but if we become aware that they're in violation, then the city has a tool in which to address it in our own DA. So that was the reason, we didn't want to create this exclusivity of let, let the other agencies deal with it, and we were out of it, let the criminal courts deal with it, and we're out of it. We felt because it's a development agreement, the intent was, is there may be more than one method in which enforcement could occur. And, and again, we have discussed these with code enforcement. I, I'm not going to tell you it's cut and dry, there is nothing in code enforcement that is black and white, one size fits all, here's your ticket, it doesn't happen that way. There's always going to be a discussion with folks, but I think we've tried to create a, a template that could be more enforceable than other types of DAs that we've dealt with. But I, I recognize there's still going to be concerns.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Neri, so in, in their proposed adjustment to the language in Section 5, do you have any objections to the way that they kind of reworded it and adjusted it there?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I, I do. I, I think the, again, the reason we wanted it to be another method of enforcement, rather than saying it is the only method of enforcement, is through code enforcement. Because again, it's a criminal charge, it goes to criminal court, the standard, the legal standard is different, and because of that, we felt the standard that you may have to, to reconsider the development agreement requirements, and whether you would choose to de-annex the property as a tool, or some other thing you want to put in here as a tool that you can consider, the standards are different, and we'd prefer to have both options. So we are in an agreement with what they're requesting.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Now I catch the "may." I was trying to figure out really what the difference was other than move, words move around, but I do see kind of a difference there with the "may" and the "shall."
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next is Josh Leonard, would like to address the council.
Good evening, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, thank you, your, I was going to say your honor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Joshua Leonard, 4199 Bavaria Eagle, Idaho. Speaking today on the limited topic of additional conditions that may be applicable in this application and to the expansion of the applicant's heavy industrial use. This doesn't waive the objections that I have against the development agreement or the proposed expanded heavy industrial use or the proposed amendment. I reserve all those, speaking specifically about the limitations. The conditions I'm going to discuss today and the ones that I included in my memorandum this afternoon are, are not a negotiation, they're required by the city code. One of the, the benefits of having them in the city code and requiring them, as, as Madam Mayor you said, is that they're, they're not subject to a, a negotiation with the applicant. Either the applicant complies with those conditions, or he doesn't get the expansion of his use. As you heard from the applicant, he's okay with or, or not okay with certain of these conditions, and that's just not the way it works. In order to mitigate the, the negative effects on the surrounding neighbors and on the residential properties that surround this, this area, these are required conditions, and they're required in a couple of different places. The first of those conditions, and it's stated in, in the code, is that he must also obtain a conditional use permit. As I've said several times from this podium already, absent a conditional use permit, this, this can't happen. The amendments to the development agreement deal with the contractual relationship between the applicant and the city. They don't substitute for the requirements of code to obtain a conditional use permit. The, the next is site screening. The city code requires masonry or concrete, not, not birmingham. Also require the applicant to be held responsible for maintaining, as Mr. Neri said, to avoid a public nuisance. Perhaps most important, all mechanical equipment and operations, power-driven, power-driven processing equipment and operations, shipping and delivery areas and other activity on the site must be kept and operated a minimum of 300 feet from abutting residential districts. In this case, it's all abutting. It doesn't draw a distinction between city residential districts and county residential districts, it says residential districts. All of this is. I'd like to jump, the other conditions are in my, in my memorandum, but I'd like to jump for, for just a second. I, I appreciate Councilmember Burnt's catch on, it, it, it provided an example of how in this process, the applicant has, instead of taking the opportunity to embrace the neighbors and listen to their, their concerns, has gone backwards. Instead of coming forward and saying, this is what we're proposing to mitigate this, he comes, comes out and says, yeah, and we're going to stack stuff on another property that's not the subject of this, and puts it right out there. This is the kind of stuff that these neighbors have been dealing with from the beginning. Instead of, of taking the opportunity given by the city to reach out and to rebuild trust with the neighbors, additional things changed, including the conditions on the temporary, or on the certificate of occupancy. We'd ask that that go back to, or that that be a requirement, that it stop operation upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy by any jurisdiction, not just by Meridian City. Stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Lou Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Josh, did you say you've sent an email this afternoon? Did you send it to council?
I don't see it.
Memorandum, Councilmember Roberts, I, it was a memorandum submitted early this afternoon, I believe, to the city clerk, and was included in the packet.
Any other questions from council? Thank you.
Jim Cox is next, would like to address the council. Sheila Miller.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Sheila Miller, 4170 North Azalea Lane, Boise, Idaho. And I've been to all of the council meetings. I know everyone's tired of hearing about everything, and I would just ask everyone who's involved in the final decision-making to listen to what your fine staff has put together in terms of mitigating and making this a enforceable situation, and also your own legal department as well.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, that is all that indicated that they would like to provide testimony.
Hey, those are, are the names that signed up in advance, is there any further testimony? Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Hello, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephanie Gibbons. I live at 8350 South Jardine Lane in Meridian, Idaho, directly across the street from this proposed new expansion. I've been to all three meetings, this being the third, I believe. I've listened to lots of my neighbors come up here and speak, I've listened to all of you people have your comments about this, and I just want to say a couple of different things. In the last meeting, there was the matter of the public trust brought up, and different people said different things about that. I have been always taught that being part of the process, it, it, you can get results. I've also been told can't fight City Hall. You've heard, we've all heard all of those things. The public trust in the process, you have a comprehensive plan that people spent hundreds of hours on putting together. You have a staff of people that looked at this proposal originally, and just tried to give you their input. You've listened to more than 50 of the people of the neighbors.
And, and Stephanie, I don't want to be disrespectful, but I, I would appreciate if you can talk to us about your feelings about the conditions that staff put together, because that is really what the conversation is about tonight.
Well, I wanted to talk about the trust, because the trust that has been placed in this council has been, we have heard that there, we heard something from the lady who's not here tonight about that he did us a solid. The public has come out against this, your staff came out against it, and now somehow that got passed through. And then there was all of this, what's why we're here tonight, because the conditions didn't meet the criteria. The original development agreement said that it could not be changed or amended, that if it was going to be changed, it would have to have a conditional use permit. That's what's needed in order to make sure that this process goes the way that it needs and that we have the enforcement capabilities. There has been a lot of ex parte communication with members of this council, things that happened before the, the, the change was even proposed. So.
Madam Mayor.
I would just ask.
If you'll hold, I'll, I'll let Stephanie finish her comment.
I would just ask that we reconsider, all of the items that have been brought up tonight have to be addressed, and that you go back and look at what's in the best interests of everyone here. The neighbors are not going to give it up, we're going to go to court on this, if that's the way it has to be, you guys get to decide. You're going against your own comprehensive plan. Okay, did you have a question?
Thank you, Stephanie. Mr. Palmer.
Ma'am, if, if you're going to accuse us of ex parte communication, would you mind citing the situations that that's taken place?
There have been, the request for public records was put out there, or given to some of the neighbors, and there was communication, email communication between members of the council and the applicant before the application was brought to the council, and since that has also, as well. So it's in your public record, take a look at it, if you, if you wonder. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Mr. Palmer, I, I will ask Mr. Neri if, thank you. Mr. Neri, I, I know the city takes ex parte very serious, and, and your office in particular, you try and keep us out of trouble. I, we had not been aware of any issue on this application, can you perhaps comment to that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, there have been a number, a number of public records requests, we have responded to all of them through the clerk's office, we have reviewed all of them. I, I don't have the, the results in front of me, but I know in discussing it with my staff who reviews all the public records, there was not a concern about ex parte in relation to land use applications, which have specific legal ramifications. Correspondence with the applicant prior to an application being made, I'm not aware of any subsequent to the application, or subsequent to the decision, because it's still, it's still pending, but we have responded. There is not an issue, from a legal perspective, it's not a legal issue right now in regards to ex parte, or bias, or anything else, there's not really a legal issue here to be had. Without more specific information, I don't have a better way to answer that, but we have reviewed that, I don't have an issue with that today.
You have investigated anything that we have been asked about, and you have not found any ex parte?
That is correct.
Okay. Anything further? Is there any further testimony on this item? Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Angie Cox, I live at 1305 East Columbia Road, directly across from the facility. And I'm not really prepared to speak in any eloquent way, I just wanted to try to stick to your request on the provisions and what we're, I think what's hard for a lot of us is what we're discussing tonight is not what we feel is the foundational issues, but wanted to reference number two on the screening topic. My home is straight across from the facility on Columbia Road, and I would want to trust Mike that he would follow any things that are put forth in this provision, but it is not possible to screen what is happening on this site. He is up on a hill, and it's not possible to screen it, I don't believe. It, I really feel for the folks on Locust Grove and what they're looking at, every time I come that way, it is a pile of trash. From our side, we're looking at the big grinder and the piles of accumulated finished material, and Mike has tried to reach out as far as what, what trees, those sort of things. I don't think it's possible to screen this. And so I know from our home, we are looking at, you know, grinders, and then we're looking at piles of finished material. I don't fully understand the 300-feet rule, but to me, if you're doing finished product, it's not just the grinders and the, the operation of it, but the finished product. What you had, Councilman Burnt had kind of been asking at first about where are these piles going? Right now, we're looking at just lots of piles, a very tidy, it looks like mulch, it looks like finished product, but it's, that's the berms we're looking at, is pi, is rows and berms of finished material, and I, I'm not real good about numbers, but I'm sure it's closer to our house than that. And so I think the finished material that neighbors, people passersby are looking at is also a topic, not just the equipment that's operating, and definitely the trash piles. On Locust Grove, it just, I don't know how you, I don't know how it will be screened, I guess, is my main point. Not that Mike wouldn't follow the rules of the agreement, I just think it's going to be very hard, it's going to take 10 years for a tree to cover it, unless he's going to go with real big mature trees, and the expense of that. So I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Sonia, is staff comfortable with the comments and language that was put into their memo on this topic, about the maturity of the trees and whatnot?
Madam Mayor, Councilman, we just, we just received this yesterday, staff hasn't had a, a long time to really look into this in great detail.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And maybe for the audience's benefit as well, their, their comments on this section, I'll just read them, so they, they quote the, the condition, and then they add some comments. They quoted as, "The property shall be screened sufficient to block the view of the processing facility, including all materials stored on the site, from South Locust Grove Road and West Columbia Road, prior to commencement of the proposed expanded use." And then their comment is follows, "Timber Creek reads this condition to require that all landscaping shall be installed and trees and plants be installed, and trees and plants of sufficient maturity, so that the recycling property is fully blocked from view. Timber Creek opposes this language as having the trees and plants reach sufficient maturity to fully block the recycling property could take years or decades. Staff clarified at the meeting with Timber Creek that the full growth was not expected, but that the trees and plants should be planted and berms constructed prior to engaging in tier-two composting." to fully block the recycling property could take years or decades. Staff clarified at the meeting with Timber Creek that the full growth was not expected, but that the trees and plants should be planted and burms constructed prior to engaging in tier-two composting. Timber Creek is open to this clarified conditions provided that pilot programs for obtaining tier-two designation as designated by DEQ are exempt from this condition."
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so to understand the discussion, what was discussed with the applicant, with myself and with Ms. Waters from planning, or Ms. Allen from planning, is the intent of the condition is to have a finished berm. To have something that doesn't appear to be the material used as a berm, but was actually a finished berm. In all of the other ones in the city that we have burming, we do have a reasonable expectation that they'll plant trees enough that will cover it. But we recognize there is a time period in which that takes place. Now, the difficulty in this case is you're having a use that has a time period in itself. Most of those are burms around residential subdivisions that are going to have houses behind them that aren't going to disappear in 10 or 15 years. And so the intent is that the trees over time will expand. Here, what the discussion was, was that we recognize there's a challenge there in trying to use vegetation. And that's why the intent was is to use finished material. Again, a berm that was intended to be a screening instead of material that's simply being used as a holding area for that. And that's the screening. That's, we really want something that was finished and completed, looked intentional, and that had some vegetation on it so it didn't look like just another pile of dirt. So that was really what we were trying to get across. We recognize there's got to be a little flexibility. We know trees don't grow immediately. We recognize growing grass and mowing grass out there doesn't make a lot of sense. But trying to create something that looks like a finished product to create actual visual screening from the roadway.
Did that help give you clarity?
Madam Mayor, I think so. And the next paragraph, I'm not going to read the whole thing. But it also talked about the mix of evergreen trees, shrubs, whatnot. Within their comments, kind of went around that they're opposed to the mix because I guess they found some trees that will provide a more fuller screening sooner than if they were to have to try to mix some stuff in. So I'm sure they'll comment on it when we get to the end, if we get to the end.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make closing remarks?
Thank you, council, or mayor, council members. Just want to take a step back. I realize my first discussion or approach may have been less clear than it should have been. Timber Creek is not opposed to the conditions. We understand the conditions are imposed and proposed to mitigate the impacts that were not properly set forth in the approved amended development agreement. We're fine with those. We want to make sure there are conditions to make the neighbors happy. But for example, with the landscaping, as the language was proposed, it simply did not make sense. As we read that language, it said, "You have to have full mature trees before you can start doing any of the tier-two composting." Now, again, that could take decades. So in our minds, that simply, it wouldn't work or allow for the use before the 10, 15-year timeframe expired and we're out. So we'd plant trees, we'd sit there and wait and wait. Oh, 10 years, 15 years are up, they've come within a thousand feet or whatever, or they sold the property, we're out. And the trees are still not full, they're still not fully grown. It didn't work for what the amended development agreement permitted to do on the property. So we tried to propose language that would meet with the spirit of the conditions that were proposed and yet work with the, A, limited timeframe, that Timber Creek will be there, and B, still provide mitigation that the council seeks, the neighbors seek. So, I mean, we've mentioned the landscaping. Modify, if we look at number two, this is Exhibit B, it says modify provisions 5.2.2 to say the property shall be screened. Well, as mentioned in the memo, Section 5.2.2 doesn't discuss screening of, i.e., blocking the view. It's screening separating by size. It's describing the recycling process. This is something that will happen, it's allowed. Take the recycling materials in, process them, and screen them to separate them up by size, quantity, et cetera. So the objection to that revision was not that we don't agree with the, what some of the provision, some of the proposed language is. It doesn't fit there. So if you look at Section 3.2, or 6.3.2, we said, hey, let's take the comments from Condition 2, pull it into Condition 6, and let's propose some language that works for all of us. Again, going back to the dust. We want to mitigate dust, we're required to mitigate dust. We want to make sure that happens. What was proposed, again, with the limited time there, it didn't make a lot of sense to have to put down some type of material. And they say vegetation, which doesn't make sense on a drivable surface, asphaltic pavement, rock, concrete, pavers, bricks, et cetera. The dust issue that Mike explained would still exist on all those. And so you put it down, it's going to get covered in dust, and we still have to water. So again, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. We understand the dust mitigation has to happen. We want to mitigate dust. How this is proposed doesn't help. In fact, we think it will make the problem worse. The leaching pond. The leaching ponds on the map are to not be standing permanent bodies of water. The ordinance section cited in the condition states, "If there's standing bodies of water that are permanent, you need to recycle that so there are not mosquitoes." Great, we're happy with that. These leaching ponds will not be permanent. It's intended that when there's a large rainwater or a large rainstorm runoff stops. It doesn't go into the canals, it doesn't go into neighboring properties. It stays within the confined recycling area. Now, some of that water may pool. It's going to be there a super short period of time, day or less. If it's there any longer, the language we propose is, "Timber Creek will do everything necessary to make sure there are no mosquitoes." That's what this language is proposed to do, is to mitigate any potential impact from mosquitoes. We're happy to do that. But what was proposed is if we put a system to circulate the water, it'll operate 10 minutes once every couple months. It's just, in the proposed use, it doesn't work. The mechanical equipment and operations shall be limited to the property. Now, this again comes down to the property versus the recycling property. Now, if you read this strictly, if Mike was to want to plow the property here on the southern edge of the recycling area, that little triangle shape, if he wants to plow it, that language prohibits it because it is a mechanical operation. He will have to break out the horse and the plow and go behind the horse. We understand the need to mitigate that impact, but that language just simply doesn't work. What we propose is, hey, let's keep with the spirit of the thousand-foot barrier. Thousand foot for the grinder to a residence. We'll do 300 feet from the edge of the property, or from the use in the recycling area to a residence. It's, we're trying to keep the same standard. We don't want four or five different standards on when things can happen. But we're happy with, you know what? We can't do these within 300 feet of a residence. Great, we're happy if it relates to the recycling activity. If it's agriculture, which this would prohibit, it doesn't make sense. So the language that was proposed was simply to try and make it fit with the additional use that you had, Councilor Burnt had talked about earlier. If it was happening before, it's agriculture, we don't care. That's what we're trying to get here, is it relates only to the tier-two composting. Yes?
You're suggesting that this is agriculture and not an industrial use?
No, 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 no. What I'm trying to say is, the language that was proposed in Condition 10, if you look at the Exhibit B, Condition 10, it states, "Add provision, all mechanical equipment and operations, power-driven processing equipment and operations, shipping and delivery area, and other outdoor activity on property, which is not just the recycling within the burms, it's the entire property subject to the development agreement, shall be located at least 300 feet from abutting residential districts." So strictly read, there cannot be a single mechanical operation, a tractor, a truck, anything, that goes within 300 feet. As was testified by the neighbors, that little triangle south of the canal is within 300 feet. So he can't farm it with a tractor. He would again, would have to break out the horse and the plow. That's what we're trying to prevent, and we want to make sure it works. Comment?
Thinking about it.
Okay. So revise Section 10, for example, to limit it to the recycling activities. Because that's what this additional tier-two process is. It's not to bar ag use, it's to bar the recycling activities. And that's what the proposed language purports, we believe purports to do. Add a provision, this is number 12, "Burning, incinerating, burying, and any other manner disposing of solid waste or recycled materials is prohibited on the property." Well, the amended development says we can bring it on, now we can't. So again, it's kind of the, we have an approved development agreement, but let's add a condition that makes the whole thing illegal. So if we tweak this to make it so that there's no burning or incinerating, happy with that. But we would like to be able to continue, let's say we take the leaves that have been processed. Well, we can't do any, we, A, can't bring them, under this language, we can't bring them on. But if we could, we can't dispose of them, we couldn't put them in the soil. We couldn't bury them. So it's not that we're opposed to conditions, it's just these don't work. We have an approval to do one thing and then the condition says, never mind. I don't think that's what the intent is. And so we're trying to push it back to clarify, hey, this needs to be narrowed a little bit so that it works and doesn't bar what's allowed right now or under the amended development agreement which was approved. And then add, Timber Creek shall adhere to all applicable federal, state, local laws and regulations. That was addressed in the prior ones, we simply said we don't think we need two of them. So I don't think we're here to say, no, no, no. It's, we want conditions, let's make them work.
When you use language like you oppose, it does sound like, no, no, no.
It does, and I apologize for the tone of the memo. It was more of a, that doesn't work as proposed, we oppose the proposed language. We like the alternative that we're proposing below to try and meet the spirit. I mean, if we flat out didn't like these, we would have said, no, we're not going to meet with the city, we simply say, no. We met with the city to try and find out what's the spirit of the intent? Or the spirit of the proposed condition? Okay, that's what the spirit is. We see what you're trying to do, let's tweak this so that we can meet that spirit but allow the use that was approved under the amended development agreement.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Low Roberts.
Madam Mayor, it seems like maybe we've, because there's two different operations going, the farming and the recycling. And it sounds like maybe just some wording needs to be changed, but maybe we're not going to get to agreement tonight. It sounds like maybe working with the city attorney would, so we get the farming aspect out of what's been captured?
Mr. Neri.
Madam Members of the council, I mean, I think we're very close. I would agree with Mr. Cranny. There's probably a few things we're trying to do to fit into our code. I'll use the burying, for example. And looking at the code in regards to burying, it's to make sure people don't bury garbage in their backyard. That's the point of this code. This is not what they're doing, right? So they're recycling material, they're processing material, and he's talking about using processed material on-site. We don't prohibit people from mulching their own material on-site at their house and using it in their yard. They're not burying garbage, they are recycling, creating, whether it's compost or whatever. So trying to find that sweet spot between those, I think we're very close. So I think, you know, again, this was an opportunity for the applicant to give us their feedback. I think we've gotten a lot of their feedback. We've heard the public's feedback as well. I don't know if Mr. Cranny has any comments in regards to those. I think we can have maybe a final product that everyone can, at least the applicant and the city can be agreeable to in two weeks, if we have some time to do that. Again, next week is tomorrow, so I don't have it by tomorrow. But we probably could have one by the 20th. I think I get where he's going. And if the council's okay with that, if you have any specific concerns about what they've raised or what we've said, we'd just like that direction from you.
Any further questions for the applicant at this point? Any further comment?
Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions. I've been working with the applicant on this for months now and the attorney. And, you know, I read through staff's Exhibit B, and I had some of the similar concerns that Justin had as far as the wording. And I think, you know, from our perspective, as far as inclusion of provisions that says that we don't create any hazard, nuisance, odor, vapors, or create any risk to the environment or public health, we're in favor of that. I mean, obviously, that is an applicable condition. The conditions that any federal, state, or local requirements applicable to their recycling facility are applicable were in agreement with that. The problem that I kind of saw was where it talked about, as Justin indicated, the screening. "The property shall be screened sufficient to block the view of the processing facility, including materials stored on-site from Locust Grove and Columbia prior to commencement of the proposed expanded use." I mean, that almost implies that instantaneously you shall be able to block all view. Well, obviously, we know when we plant trees and we build burms, there is a certain timeframe for maturity of that material. And so it was just kind of the wording that bothered me. And as far as the driving surfaces, and I'll wrap up real quick. You know, my husband's had a construction company, and the worst thing you can do is have a piece of equipment, like an excavator, where it has tracks, and try to run it on asphalt, bricks, concrete. That just doesn't work. And we dealt with that with his facility that's in Ada County, that, you know, you have to have a material that is more of a gravel dirt base. Otherwise, it just tears it all up. And then staff eliminated all of the water and dust suppression, which is also included as far as our fire suppression, as far as the water tank, the sprinklers, the hoses. All of that was part of our fire suppression plan that's integral to the system. And as far as the operation is concerned, and staff basically eliminated all of that. So that needs to be included, you can't eliminate that portion. And we've got to obviously have a surface that's maintainable, but yet doesn't create any hazard or nuisance. You know, as far as leaching ponds, there's no plan for any leaching ponds. And the mechanical equipment, I was concerned about that language.
Becky, you said you were wrapping up.
I'm wrapping up. So I think, working with your staff, I think we can refine these so it protects the public, protects the city, and you have enforceable conditions.
But I think some of your points are what is at the heart of this problem. Is this is an expanded non-conforming use that typically isn't allowed in the city. And so you're getting city conditions because that is the expectations for industrial uses. And that's where I think Ms. Low Roberts said, we need to find that clarity between where it is agricultural and where it is the expanded recycling, composting use that is industrial. And how do you delineate the conditions for that? And if staff feels that they're getting closer, that's good. But some of those issues that you bring up is exactly, I think, what council was trying to find some agreement to so that the neighbors have something dependable that is enforceable by our code enforcement that is clear.
And Madam Mayor, we are in total agreement with exactly what you said. Totally agreement. And I think with Mr. Neri's help and with your staff's help and then our legal team here, that we can come to an agreement on conditions that make everybody feel comfortable. here, that we can come to an agreement on conditions that make everybody feel comfortable with what's happening here, and we delineate and define the difference between the agricultural and the existing non-conforming use. I think it is a doable thing.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council? It sounds like this needs to be continued for further clarification? Or not?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move we continue the hearing for two weeks to get new verbiage on the conditions. To November 20th.
Okay, so I have a motion to continue this till November 20th to further clarify the amendments and the conditions for this DA.
Second.
And I have a second.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
For what it's worth, this is the very concern that in large part led me to oppose the original application. I thought the concerns from the public just weren't yet properly addressed, and all the parties were trying to make something work, and appreciate the motion to give that a chance, but it was one of the reasons that I originally didn't think it should have been approved in the first place. Hopeful things go well in two weeks.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to continue to November 20th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. I'm going to call a recess for 10 minutes. I-
Second.
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 Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and get this meeting back on track. Item 8E is a public hearing for H-2018-0097. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for a rezone. This site consists of .73 of an acre of land, it's owned CC, and is located at 1321 and 1323 North Main Street. There are two existing structures on this site. The one at the, actually, let me go to the aerial real quick here. This is the property right here. The structure at the front of the property here was constructed in 1937 as a residential dwelling and was converted to a commercial structure in 2001. The structure here at the rear of the property was constructed in 1983 and converted to a commercial use in 2001. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is Old Town. A rezone of .73 of an acre of land from the CC to the Old Town District is requested, consistent with the Old Town Future Land Use Map Designation. Two existing structures on the site are proposed to remain. The structure at the rear of the property houses the Calico Cattery, primarily a retail store with ancillary cat boarding. And the front structure is proposed to be converted from commercial back to a residential use. Access is provided for this site via two one-way driveways to and from Main Street. Staff and ACHD recommends these accesses remain with no changes. When and if the property redevelops in the future with a more intense use, access may be restricted to a single access and cross-access easements may be required to adjacent properties. The UDC requires off-street parking to be provided based on the square footage of non-residential structures and the number of bedrooms and dwelling units. Based on the square footage, 1,560 square feet of the commercial structure and the number of bedrooms proposed in the dwelling, which is three, a minimum of seven spaces are required total. There are currently six paved parking spaces for the shared use. An additional space is required to be provided on the site in order to comply with the minimum UDC standards. The commission did recommend approval of this application. Scott Smith, the applicant, testified in favor. There was no opposition or commenting testimony, and no written testimony was received. The commission was in favor of the proposed residential use and the existing access remaining. There are no outstandings, issues for council, and no written testimony since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Any questions from council? Is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Scott Smith, 2286 North Glenfield Way, Meridian Idaho, 83642.
Thank you.
646.
646. Do you have any comment, anything you want to add to the staff comments?
No, you guys, you'll be proud to have the property on Main Street. It's gonna look fantastic, and I can't wait to get started.
We look forward to it. Council, any questions for Scott? Thank you.
That's it, thanks.
Mr. Clerk?
No one signed up, Madam Mayor?
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Okay, if staff and the applicant have no further comments, council, if you have any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
I move that we close the public hearing for H-2018-0097.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes? That was an enthusiastic vote, wasn't it?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
I move that we approve the Smith rezone, item 8E,
I have a motion to approve and a second to need discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Thank you for the enthusiastic votes. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thanks, guys.
Item 8F is a public hearing on H-2018-0088. I'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next applications are requests for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 12.71 acres of land, zoned RUT in Ada County, located at 5745 and 5865 North Black Cat Road. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is medium-density residential, which is three to eight units per acre. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of 12.84 acres of land with an R4 zoning district and requests council approval of a step down in density from medium-density to low-density residential. The proposed residential use and zoning is compatible with either the low-density residential or medium-density residential future land use designation. However, the proposed density at 2.4 units per acre is slightly below the minimum three units per acre desired in the medium-density designated area. The step down in density is requested because adding more lots will require a secondary emergency access to be provided, and only one access is available. And fire flow would need to be addressed differently. The geometry and characteristics of the site, i.e. the location of the McMullen lateral along the northern boundary of the site and the necessary public streets, impact the available building area, resulting in a lower density than desired in the comprehensive plan. A preliminary plat is proposed, as shown, consisting of 30 building lots and nine common lots on 12.71 acres of land in the proposed R4 zoning district. Proposed lots range in size from 8,096 square feet to 13,570 square feet, with an average lot size of 10,060 square feet. There are two existing homes on the site. The one at the west end of the site will remain on a lot in the proposed subdivision. That is on this far west lot right there. The other home and accessory structure will be removed. One access is proposed for the development via North Black Cat Road. Two stub streets are proposed, one to the north, North Willow Side Avenue, and one to the south, North Oakstone Avenue, for future extension and interconnectivity with adjacent future developments. A 35-foot-wide landscape street buffer is proposed along Black Cat Road and entryway corridor in accord with UDC standards. There are several existing trees on this site that are proposed to be removed that do require mitigation as proposed. The UDC requires a minimum 10% qualified open space to be provided with development and a minimum of one qualified side amenity. Total of 1.6 acres or 12.5% of qualified open space is proposed with a segment of the city's multi-use pathway system, a micropath to the future school site to the west, and a tot lot with play equipment in accord with UDC standards. Conceptual building elevations were submitted, as shown, for future single-family residential detached homes in the development. Building materials consist of a mix of siding materials with stone veneer accents. The commission recommended approval of these applications. Jane Suggs, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented. Written testimony was received from Jane Suggs, the applicant. The commission was in favor of the larger lot sizes and decreased density with a step down in density requested by the applicant. There were no changes made by the commission to the staff recommendation, and there are no outstanding issues for council tonight. And there has been no written testimony received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions at this time? Is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners and mayor, I mean, excuse me, mayor and council. I'm Jane Suggs, and I work at WH Pacific, 2141 Airport Way in Boise, and I'm here representing the Westbridge subdivision. If you'll put the landscape plan back up for me, I'd appreciate it. There you go. Actually, we're very pleased tonight to present to you the annexation, rezone, and preliminary plat for Westbridge. I think Sonya did a really great job of going over the details of the site. Of course, let me begin by letting you know that we agree with the analysis by the staff and also agree to all the conditions of approval. In fact, you'll see, if you look through the staff report, there's some markouts concerning the landscape plan that we've already made the changes and resubmitted a landscape plan so we meet the approval of the code for the landscape plan. We certainly appreciate the unanimous approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And as Sonya noted, we are requesting an annexation of 12.7 acres into the city with a zone of R4, which is supported by the comprehensive plan. We are asking for a step down in density. My first time ever asking to actually step down in density. This will allow us to build just below the three units per acre that's in the medium-density residential. Gives us 2.4 units per acre. We think this is a really good opportunity to put in some good-sized lots. There is some higher density to the south of us, and there are some larger lots to the north of us, one which is actually about five acres that probably won't be developed because it is the tree farm. I don't know if you've ever been down the street there, but you see the big lot with the tree farm. And I was told that it was a carbon sequestration. Is that how I say that? Location, that that has been set aside as a special undeveloped or probably not-developed piece of property. Again, as Sonya mentioned, there is the geometry of the site here, the McMullen lateral that will be piped along the north boundary. This transition of lots from the higher density, or at least the zone of higher density below us, to the south of us, these larger lots to the north. We think that we have designed a really nice transition property here. We're, of course, meeting all the lot dimensions that are required for the R4 zone. And we're providing some significant landscaping. As you drive in, you'll see medians, a landscaped area to the right. We are providing a part of the pathway system along the right-of-way of Black Cat, and specifically providing a separated sidewalk along the south side of Vanderbilt to go through and provide a good access to the school site, school sites located to the west of this site. So you'll see a little pathway there that allows the kids to walk across the street even and go down to the potential school site. I believe that's a middle school site. Let's see. We did have a neighborhood meeting. It was fairly well-attended. And the most of the comments that we received were from folks that wanted to make sure that the irrigation system would continue to operate during the construction. Of course, that's state law, so of course we will. And just the schedule for development. I don't really have a whole lot to add. I'd like to stand for questions, but I do respectfully request your approval of the annexation, the rezone, and the preliminary plat for Westbridge.
Thank you, Jane. Any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No signups that indicated they would like to provide testimony.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who, yes, ma'am?
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Libby Bagley. I live at 5,000 Larry Lane, Meridian Idaho, 83646.
Thank you.
Is the Madam Mayor and council people, is there a way to go to the larger view where we see the lots there? Thank you. I am one property owner in a subdivision that actually has five lots. We are to the north of the proposed area. People in our subdivision have lived in the area on the average of 20 to 30 years. We recognize growth is coming. We recognize growth has invaded us quite a bit from the east. I am in favor of the lower-density proposal. My personal want would be to go even slightly lower. Right now, when we walk down the road, we see two houses. Now, you're asking us to see 30 houses in the same area. And as a transition area from high-density to low-density, it doesn't feel like we've got a transition quite yet. I think a slightly lower density would be what I would be in favor for. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
My name's Denise LaFever. I'm at 6706 North Salvia Way, Meridian Idaho. I actually like this project. I think it's great they're doing a step down. I think it's wonderful they're bringing in bigger lots. And it's really nice to see cul-de-sacs instead of the shared driveways. I think they did a great job with the landscaping in it. So I think this is a great fill-in project, and I think it's really nice transition going from the R15 over to the larger lots. So I think it's a go, it's a winner. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Is there any further testimony?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
A question for Sonya. Does the center cul-de-sac stub into, or connect into the R15 to the south?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, yes, it is a stub street. It's shown as a cul-de-sac for fire department turnaround.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, any further questions? Seeing no further testimony or questions, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor?
Unless Jane has any... Sorry, Jane. Mr. Burton?
I move that we close the public hearing for Westbridge subdivision, H-2018-0088.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on 9 or 8F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
I personally think that it's just refreshing to see it, an application where there is less density. We all know the challenges that we face with growth, and I believe this is one example where smart growth makes sense. And, thank you. And it's like it's a great project.
With that, I move that we approve H-2018-0088.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 8G is a public hearing, continued from April and May in this same year, on H-2017-0142. I will ask for staff comments at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Next item on your agenda this evening is the Summertown subdivision. As Madam Mayor mentioned, this has been before you a couple times and has been continued out. And the main reason for the continuance was, at the time that we brought this forward to council, there was a property boundary dispute with the adjacent property to the east. And the applicant had to go through a rezone process with the county to get that cleared up so that they could process a property boundary dispute back to that property owner and then come back with you with some revised plans. Staff did prepare a memo for you to kind of try to capture exactly what we've heard. We went back through the record, tried to see what you guys wanted the applicant to bring back. So this evening, they have brought back some revised plans, a revised elevation site plan, landscape plan, for you to take under consideration this evening. And I'll go through that in my presentation before you this evening as well. So just to get everyone oriented again as to where this property is located. It's located on the southeast corner of Venable Lane and Eustick Road. The applicant is requesting annexing 15.13 acres with the, from the RUT zoning district in Ada County to the TNR zoning district within the city. If you recall in our previous presentation, verbal presentation to the council, we had informed you that once this property is annexed and zoned, if, and they're proposing a multifamily development on a majority of this site, it does not require additional public hearing before this body. That's why staff has spent so much time trying to analyze and review these site plans elevation so that we have it captured correctly and make sure that it is consistent with our comprehensive plan, which is mixed-use community. So again, going through that memo that we prepared for you last week to share the differences with you. So on the left-hand side is the previous concept plan. At that particular time, the applicant had more contemporary design. They were taller structures, more density, less open space. And commission and council also had concerns with some of the transition between the scale of these units. On the right-hand side, the applicant's provided a revised site plan that shows less density. So we're going down from approximately 272 units down to 205 units in the plan to the right, and you actually increase open space. Now, the amenity package itself is consistent to what was shown to you at the previous two hearings. So the primary difference here is an increase in open space and a decrease in density. The other thing is the differences in the architecture, and I'll get to that in a minute. But I did want to let you know, so the previous plan included 22% open space. This plan shows 40%. The amenities include a pool, water feature, clubhouse, fitness facility, indoor play structure, and outdoor play structure, a media room, and a pet park. That is no change, those aren't any changes from the previous plan. Density has decreased from 18.6 dwelling units to the acre to 13.5 dwelling units to the acre. And that is more consistent with the MUC designation, in which we anticipate dwelling units between 6 and 15 units to the acre. Again, the number of units have decreased from 272 down to 205, and that does include the bank of nine single-family homes along the south boundary of the site. And then parking spaces have decreased in order to make way for additional open space. So the original proposal had 544 parking spaces. The plan on the right shows, depicts 404 parking spaces. Again, I'll quickly go through the elevation. So here's the contemporary design that was brought forth to you on both of those days. And now the applicant's actually providing more of a mix of unit types, so more of a townhome style, which again is oriented towards the street as we envision in our traditional neighborhood districts and our mixed-use community designations. And then the larger three-story structures are more internal to the site. Looking at the two designs, you can see that the new design, architecture blends in and is more cohesive with the surrounding residential developments in the area. I did want to step back and kind of show you the broader picture too. So again, we have some multifamily to the west and some single-family. And that's really what the applicant's trying to do, is provide that buffer, that transition that was discussed at both previous hearings too. So again, the townhome units would be along the streets with the front doors oriented to those roadways. And then the larger three-story structures would be oriented interior to the site. So one, staff still has some concerns with the transition. Be honest with you, we still would like to see a better transition along the southern boundary from the residential lots and these three-story structures. These can pretty be large and imposing, so that's something you should take under consideration this evening. I'd also mention to you that we did receive these on October 29th. We did our best to capture some of the pertinent changes in our memo to discuss with you. But these are significant changes from what the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation was made to you. And they took, their recommendation for approval was predicated on the previous plan and the previous architecture. This has not been shared with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So really, staff's asking council this evening is, if you feel this is a substantial enough change, do you feel it should be remanded back to P&amp;Z for their revised recommendation to you? If not, if you feel that you can make an informed decision on this application this evening, we'd ask that you continue it out for two weeks. Let us make sure that our staff report have the correct DA provisions because I have mentioned to you, we don't get another vit at the apple. The DA is what's going to govern the development of the site moving forward. This multifamily development will only require staff-level approval until they decide to subdivide the rest of the property with the nine residential lots on the south boundary. They'd have to come back for subdivision approval. But to develop the multifamily portion, it does not require additional public hearing. So again, if you have enough information to make a decision this evening, again, continue that out. And then I also wanted to share with the council that we did receive additional public testimony on this application from six residents. We had Karen Bodine, Diane Rissel, Bill Casinelli, Tyler Moss, Susan Littlefield, and Genesis Mylum all submitted testimony on this application since it was heard back in May. Again, Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of, again, a previous plan and different architecture. I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions for staff at this time? Mr. Burton?
I don't know, I don't necessarily have any questions. Is this the appropriate time to, you know, since we're going to continue it? It sounds like I, I... Sorry. My goodness, I apologize. I remember this... I remember this application when, when it was before us before. And I was one that made comments on it back then. And, and I, and I feel that my, my thought process with this hasn't changed. And I said this last time, unless something substantially changes with how dense this is, I have some real concerns with it especially. Isn't this the, Madam Mayor, isn't this the application where we found out that kiddos were going to have to get bused to another school because the local school was too, was full and wouldn't be able to accommodate any kids that would potentially live in the subdivision?
Yes.
So, um, I, I just have some real concerns with the amount of density that's already in this neighborhood. So, I mean, if we want to continue it, that's great. But like I said before, I just want to be crystal clear on the record, creating an expectation from this seat, what I, what my, you know, my thoughts and, you know, are in regard to this, this application. I, I think this application looks great. I think the amenities are fine, happy to see more open space. It's just, in my opinion, just the wrong location for it. So I just want to be upfront, I want to be crystal clear. I don't want there to be any confusion coming from my purview. So I just thought I'd mention those comments on the record since we are going to continue, it sounds like, this application.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
If I may ask a question, Mr. Burnt? You mentioned you want a significant drop in the density from the original plan. What percent of a, of a drop would make it a good project to consider?
I, I, I would, and I, it's not my job to, I believe, um, to, to state, you know, someone else's business and something. But I, I do believe if, um, I just don't like high-density period in this location. Whether it's this or, you know, the previous concept plan that was presented before us. I just don't like high-density, or I just don't think it's a great spot for it. So I, I don't know if it, if, I don't know if my, my thought process would change if you lowered it another hundred units. It's not necessarily the amount of units that are here, it's just that... I, I just, I just, it's just the wrong location for high-density period in my, in my estimation. And that's what I said in their, in their previous presentation as well. So I feel like I'm, I've been pretty consistent with that.
Thank you. Any follow-up?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I mean, I remember the meeting pretty clearly. I mean, it was an amazing, amazing project to me then. Way higher level of, of open space and of amenities than we would typically see in an apartment development. We made a lot of really strong requests, and I think one of the major reasons we didn't just, we, was on the edge but didn't quite get approved that night was because of the, you know, the little strip of property in the northeast corner there complicating it. That's been dealt with. And in the meantime, also cut it down by twenty-five percent of the units. Almost doubled the open space four times, the minimum requirement. We talked so much about, don't, don't do just close to the minimum. Well, we have definitions of minimums because we believe that's what would constitute a quality project. This is four times the minimum open space. Major reduction in the number of units per acre. I mean, if, he's, they've complied with everything that we asked for. And it fits in the map. It's what we've said, if you're going to bring us something, don't bring us anything unless this is what it is. So to me, it's just, why on earth wouldn't we approve this? How, how can we have any kind of standing not to?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
I, I don't, I don't disagree with anything you just said, Councilmember Palmer. I, I think I, like I said in my previous statement, I think, I think what they, what they did was, you know, I, I think they're going in the right direction, I guess. But if you were to go back in the minutes, even back then, I, I was opposed to this. In fact, I believe it was Kent Brown, if I'm not mistaken, was the, was the person who presented this in front of us. I, I do remember that. And even back then, I, I said specifically, I, I don't like this project in this area. So I feel it's my responsibility to not waste people's time, you know, I, in resources. If the, if, if the, if the developer wants to continue to pour money into this, this proposed development, then I, that, they have every right to do so. But I have every right to express my opinions, and that's the reason why I was elected, to express my opinions and to, to express my point of view. And I have just as much right to say that as anyone else does. To be honest with you, if, if they choose to come back with high-density when I said no high-density in this area to me, then that's not on me, is it?
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to comment? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shannon Robnett. I reside at fifty-one oh three Zamora, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I hope you had a great summer. While you guys were in here doing stuff, we were down at the county taking care of the spite strip that we had and that issue that we had with that. Okay. One of the, the things that I, I'm actually a little disappointed that Councilmember Mylum isn't here. When we left the last hearing, I, I heard what, Mr. Burnt, you said and what Genesis said. And I left here and I was puzzled because I did comply. At that point, I had forty percent more common area than I needed. I had more parking, I had more amenities. And I, I really left here trying to figure out what, what is it that I'm not, that I'm not doing? And, and I don't want to misquote Congress, or Councilmember Mylum. But I believe she said, "I like your project, just not here," similar to what you said. I didn't misquote her that bad, did I? Maybe she's here. But I drove through. I see that's how he deals with stuff. I hope he's not the head of your IT department. Is that working? There we go. Okay. So Bill, how do we click on this and get it going? Are you taking over? So we did go down to Ada County Development Services, and we did deal with the spite strip. That was a unanimous decision by both planning and zoning and Ada County. And that was based on just the fact that we needed to get the zonings consistent. But as I said, I drove through the neighborhood, and I just kind of was looking around, and I saw what was going on. And, and I was trying to figure out what, what is it that I don't comply with? Because your code says in the, in your comp plan that this area is to be actually high-density. We're not high-density, by the way, we're medium-density according to your definitions. But it shows that it's supposed to have that. And I heard what you said about four-story, and I heard what you said about three-story, and I heard what you said about schools and kids and everything like that. And I was just driving around, I was trying to figure it out. And I think it was later that week that I realized that, what is the feel of this neighborhood? What is it really saying? What is it really doing? And then I went out to Harris Ranch, and I saw what they'd done out there, and I went, you know what? I get it. I can understand what it meant that we didn't fit the neighborhood. We're four-story and we're contemporary. We're not neighborhood-friendly. We're not like our neighbors. And so what I began to look at was the density that they have in here and the open space that they currently have. And you could see in here that there's a lot of alley-load houses that have little or no yard. And I thought, okay, but we want to be good neighbors, we want to see how this fits. So we took our previous rendition here that had parking all around, and it really put everything kind of in at the unit so you could park at your front door and walk to that. But that's not really what this is. See, if you go back to architecture, this is called garden style, right? And when I began working with my consultants, we figured out the garden style was because you planted the, the building in the middle of the garden. And so when you look at what we've designed here, we have designed in front yards that front Venable and Eustick. We've designed rear-load. We've got garages on a lot of these units. We really have gone a long way to fit with the neighborhood. And so when we look at that and we look at the garden-style concept, you're right. We did take this up to four times what your common area requirements are. But we planted all of the units in the center. We created walking paths around that create a garden feel, that give the open space, that is really what we were trying to go with when we pushed our units to four-story, because we wanted to get the density, but we wanted to give the openness too. And so when we did that, we were able to come up with a hundred and ninety-six unit apartment complex with nine residential lots behind. The residential lots are bigger than any of the surrounding residential lots to act as that buffer between us and the neighbors behind us. Bill asked the comment, or made the comment about the, the buffer. And, and you cannot, you will not be able to see the apartment complex if you're standing on the back patio of the people directly to the south over the tops of the two-story houses that will be built right here on this property right here. You will not be able to see it, it'll be physically impossible. So you'll be able to look through, you'll be able to look around, but to physically see over the top of that. So I feel like we've done quite a bit to buffer that. Mr. Borton mentioned that the two-story needed to be on Venable and on Eustick, and we took that to heart. In fact, if you look at some of the slides here, uh, let me back up. I'm going too far here, but bear with me. You can see some of these houses are designed to look like three-story. Some of my neighbors are designed to look like three-story, and we've dropped it down to two. So with all of that being said, we, we hear about the schools, and we hear about, you know, the people that came in, the, the very first people that spoke, that talked about crosswalks and the importance of, of child safety and protection. And I completely agree with all of that. I was one of the ones that voted to raise our registration eighteen bucks so we could have exactly that. But I look at these neighborhoods, and, and I, I don't know how much the public really realizes that development fees build schools. Property taxes don't. Property taxes are maintenance fees. Not one penny of property taxes goes to build a school. It doesn't go to build new police stations. That all comes from development. And when we're done with this project, we'll have built the roads, we'll have built the sewer systems, we'll build the water systems, and we'll have given that back to the city. Then we will have a, a property tax that will be eight hundred dollars a door higher than our neighbors, mostly because we don't have the homeowner's exemption, but also because of the price tag of the project and the density that we put it in. So you can see here from our elevations, we've designed to have a plaza in the center. So when you look at that and you come at the street from the side and you look at it, we've designed in a plaza that's a drivable, walkable plaza with benches and parkways so that it connects that whole thing and gives this community a soul in and of itself. So that you can sit down and you can enjoy the community right there by the community center, by the clubhouse, by the indoor-outdoor play areas, by the pool, and you can really have a sense of what this community means. And, and so when I was sitting there driving through and I saw what they'd done in Harris Ranch, where they'd taken this really high-density stuff, but they'd given it a real neighborhood feel. And I really felt like that's what we have attempted to do in, in completely hiring a new architecture firm, going a whole different direction. We have, we've reduced by seventy, or by twenty-five percent the unit count. We've increased our common space by over double what we had even last time. Uh, sorry, forty percent. We've taken the two stories down, another thing that you've asked for. And so one of the things that we, that we want to look at is just at, at the actual dollars and cents of it all. The fact that we just picked a random house, I hope nobody in the audience lives here, but a house at Lot Five, Block Nine, Crossfield subdivision valued at two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars generates eighteen hundred and eighty-two dollars a month, or a year, sorry, in taxes. We will be at twenty-four hundred and seventy-one dollars a unit in taxes. We will pay more than our fair share when we come to the neighborhood. So when we come in and we comply with the comp plan you have, when we come in and we bring our design and we work toward getting what is needed in the neighborhood, we really ask you that you approve this project because it's what we've asked for. The other thing that we look at is the growth in the marketplace, right? We have got, we are on the, the cusp of a curve. And I've got, we did a market study from a national firm. And what we found is that with, if you take everything that's been approved in Ada County and look at what's been approved historically and typically, forty to fifty percent of projects that you get approved in multifamily through the city of Meridian actually get built. And if you take that number and you apply it to where we need to be for unit counts to, to handle the incoming population, if we build fifty percent our current conversion rate, which has been consistent for the last seven years, you, you do that, you'll be a hundred units annually short in this marketplace. Now, let's just say you let us greedy developers go nuts, and we overdevelop, and we do seventy-five percent of them. That means you'll have a surplus of two hundred units annually in the marketplace. Pretty soon, banks will shut down lending on us, we will have vacancies, that will drive pricing down. Now, all of a sudden, you'll have affordable housing. But when you really look at what that means, it means can we really get behind that curve to where we don't have good, sensible projects that meet the demands of the code, that meet the comp plan, that meet the requests of you guys, that really do take care of this? We talk about roads and infrastructure. We know that the road from Meridian to Cherry, or from Meridian, from Cherry to Eustick will be built in the next twelve to eighteen months. My project won't be online for almost twenty-four months. When I look at the project that I have right here at Penwood, I have a waiting list. The project down at the Prelude, it opened sixty-four units full. Every single one of them was committed. They have another phase coming online in December, those are all committed as well. We've got units coming online, but I do not believe that they're fast enough. And so when you look at the things that need to happen, and you look at what the community really needs, you look at what developers bring. And we do, we bring growth. We bring growth to help with the community that's necessary to fill the need, the housing demand that we have. Because we can't really afford to get into a crisis situation where we're now behind the curve and we don't have enough. We already have that to an extent I've not seen in my career. We have two percent vacancy. We have a, a less than a three-month supply of residential housing available in the marketplace. So I want to close by, by letting you guys know that the TNR standard, it is about multifamily. It also is about townhomes, which you saw, we do have townhome style with the two-car, with the one and two-car garages that front Venable and front Eustick that have the front porches on them. And we, uh, we have that as far as an additional to our mixed use so we don't just have an apartment-style building. And then the, the last thing that I want to bring up is that in doing these projects, we're talking about a twelve, or an eighteen to twenty-four month cycle between the time we start now and the time we finish. And in that eighteen to twenty-four months, there's a lot that goes on, and there's a lot that happens. And what I'm seeing in the marketplace, I don't know if you guys know this, you probably do, but Ada, NAPA is planning on passing an impact fee. And at the end of the fiscal year, they'll probably pass that, that'll take effect next year. That'll affect the price of housing in NAPA, about five thousand, six thousand dollars a, a door in cost. That's going to push more people your way. That's going to push more people into Meridian because now the, the spread that everybody went to NAPA to avoid the housing cost, maybe to get a little cheaper, maybe went a little farther to Caldwell, it's going to push them back in this direction. Are you guys prepared for that? So I understand my neighbors' concerns, I really do. And I think if you'll really take a minute and look at this, you'll see that we have taken those into consideration. We have listened to what you guys have said. We've tried to design a project that we can be proud of, that meets the needs of the community. Where you've said in your comp plan that this needs to have a designated area of sixteen units per acre, we are now under that with what we're doing. We're actually less dense than the existing apartments next door. They're eighty units on five acres. We're less than that. We're less than that. That's sixteen units an acre, we're thirteen and a half. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions at this time? Okay. No questions, thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John Carver?
John Carver would like to address the council.
My name is John Carver, 730 West Clare. I would like to have your permission to have Doug Taylor speak on behalf, we have several folks that are here this evening, but we thought that one person speaking for us cohesively would make it a lot easier for you to know what we're all thinking, because we've all discussed it. Would that meet with your approval?
Certainly, if you have a spokesperson, we have 10 minutes that we can provide. Thank you. Good evening, thank you for being here.
Good evening, thank you.
You'll state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Doug Taylor, I live at 2727 North Ridgeberry Avenue in Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Try not to take the 10 minutes. First, let me say thank you for your service. I appreciate anyone willing to sit in your seats, because I know you're not with your families and you're serving the citizens, so I do appreciate it. Some of you I know well, as I've worked in this building for the last five and a half years as Congressman Labrador's Chief of Staff, but I'm also a licensed real estate agent and I sell apartments. And so tonight, I wanted to talk to you about a little bit about this development and share some of my concerns, and actually propose some questions for you to consider that I think are really important. I work for a broker right now, and we currently have about $100 million in escrow and active listings throughout the region, all in multifamilies. So we study the market. It's our responsibility to understand what's happening in the market in terms of people who want to buy these properties, those who want to sell those properties. So we have spent quite a bit of time studying Meridian and the Treasure Valley, so I did want to share some things I think are important that need to be considered. I do appreciate the fact that there's fewer units. I live in the neighborhood, I am a little bit concerned about that, and I share Council Member Burnt's concerns, the density is extremely high. But I think I should, I want to share some facts and figures, and I'm not sure where the previous, the applicants' numbers come from, I'm sure they're good, but I'd like to, you know, we have our own source of research that we draw on. But in the next, in the last 12 months, we've had about 150 units that have come online in Meridian. In the next year, that's going to go up to 1,694. And then the year after that, it's about 1,165. And when you actually dive into the numbers, four- and five-star units, which is what this would be a Class A-type property, the growth for this year to next year is 104%. When you look at a three, like a Class B or a three-star property, the growth in Meridian is zero. And then when you look at affordable housing, one- and two-star properties, it's, we're actually losing housing. And so I do think that there's a concern about the mix, and I do believe we are overdeveloping this type of a property. And I actually think that city council would be wise to spend some time looking more into, a little more aggressively, how can we provide some more affordable housing in the area? Because I do work with a lot of individuals as well who really struggle with housing, and it's hard to find them a place, and there's a year-plus wait, waiting list to get any kind of subsidized housing. So we do have a housing problem in Meridian. And to continue to bring on over 3,700 new units in the next little bit, all the same type of property, I think is a mistake in terms of looking at the market. And I do, I do disagree with the applicant's assertion that we're behind the curve. I actually am concerned that we're overdeveloping this particular type of property. If you go look at Prelude at Paramount, I think it's, I want to say it's 400, I don't have it off the top of my head, 400 units. We have some new properties coming down on Meridian and Eustick, there's 32 there. There's going to be another about 100 down on Linder and Eustick, just about a quarter of a mile down the road. All the same type of properties, and they're all within one-mile radius of this proposed project. So you're looking at 700, 800, up to 1,000 units of the same, sort of the same segment, people paying 1,200 to 1,400 for a two-bedroom, 1,000-square-foot type of a home. So I do think that is a concern the city council should consider when we're looking at the types of properties we're bringing on. I also think that there, I have a real concern that where we are in the cycle with the economy, we're on year 10 of a growth, typically about year seven, things sort of adjust, and recent estimates from the two previous Federal Reserve Chairs are suggesting we might be in a recession within the next year to 24 months. We know interest rates are going up, we're going to have another adjustment in December, three more next year. When interest rates go up to try to control inflation, you end up really driving the value of these types of properties down, because their value is derived from the cash flow. And so you have to look at how much it's going to cost in terms of the owner, what their cash flow is, and how you determine the property. When you're looking at a construction loan and then trying to convert that into a permanent loan, once the construction's completed, you're looking at a significant increase. I'll give you an example of why I'm concerned about this. We're currently working with an owner in Montana who is working on a large mixed-use property, and he called us because his construction costs went up $2 million more than projected because he couldn't find a framing crew, he had to bring them up from Denver. And with the rising in interest rates, he's concerned he was going to run out of money in the middle of the project. So he's asked us to help him sell off part of his properties to help ensure it's financed so that he doesn't get killed when he tries to do, get some permanent financing on this loan. So I am concerned that at this point in the cycle, we may run into projects that are partially built and then they run out of funding, or there's some concerns about where interest rates are. So that is a legitimate concern I think we do need to consider. Keep in mind, I love apartments, because that's what I want to sell, that's what I'm going to feed my family with, but I'm more concerned about having a healthy marketplace. I want to sort of close, and I don't want to drag it on too much longer, but I do think if the city is moving forward with some of these, continues to move forward with these projects, if you do have concerns where you have a project that's left unfinished, I think it sends a message to constituents that the city council maybe is more concerned about the priorities of developers as opposed to the concerns of constituents, and that would include myself. I don't think there's any doubt that the applicant's done a really good job trying to, to consider what you're asking him, and he's made a lot of modifications, which I really appreciate. I think the drawings are beautiful, they're really, really nice, so there's no disagreement there. But I just also agree, I'm not sure this is the right place for that. But I would propose a bigger question that I think you should consider longer term, which is, you know, at this point, is it wise to continue trying to push as many projects into the pipeline that are just fitting what I consider a, you know, there's a need there, but I think we're overdeveloping in those four- and five-star communities. So I would just, I think we should recognize our economy's changing, we should recognize the city of Meridian is changing quickly, nobody knows that more than you. But I do believe it would be wise to be careful, to be thoughtful, be fully informed about these decisions because of the reasons I stated earlier. So I appreciate your time, and that's all I have for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
If I may harass Doug for a second. Doug, my friend.
Yes.
I have a hard time believing that you think that government, this board of six people, should be making investment decisions on behalf of people willing to invest money in our city, and then instead asking them to bring government subsidized housing instead of Class A.
I didn't say that.
You said, well, we need more of.
Affordable housing. If you look at the, if you look at the numbers, you can't deny the fact that we have a major problem with affordable housing in Meridian. And I'm not saying government-built housing or subsidized housing, we do have a problem there, and that's, that's just a fact. I mean, you know me, you know where I stand politically on this stuff. I'm like the applicant, I actually voted for the registration fees, which is the first time I'll ever admit to being okay with a tax increase, but it's needed. It's needed at this time, so, and I'm not, the city council, that's what you're here to do, is you make decisions on zoning changes. So you can't say that I'm trying to make an argument that we should have more government telling developers what to do. That's what you're, you have to do that. You're city council, you, that's part of your duties. So I'm just saying, when you're making those decisions, you should consider not just a specific project and whether or not they're meeting the specific requirements that you're making, you need to think about the city, the bigger picture, what's happening. That's, I mean, you know, I'm not making up the numbers, these are the numbers I pulled from the research that we use to inform investors that we have throughout the entire Intermountain West on making decisions when they're buying apartments.
Thanks.
We can continue later if you want.
Love to.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I could ask one question on that. If the underlying market data were different with regards to the supply of this type of product, would you be here testifying in support of it at this location?
Well, um, in this location, I just think it's extremely dense, and I just overall have a problem. Now, of course, I'm a citizen, I'm concerned about that, I live in this neighborhood, so I will admit there's a little bit of, you know, not-in-my-backyard kind of syndrome, but the fact is, like, kids are crowded with schools, you know, trying to get on Meridian Road, it's not being widened. But then, you know, the vacancy rates that I'm projecting in the next few years are going to be over 10%, 11%. You know, we're averaging 5%, which is where most people like to have it. So I still think I would have the same concerns about this specific area. I do believe we do need a lot of development in Meridian. We're growing quickly. When I moved, I'm from Idaho Falls originally, but when I moved here in 2013, I think population was like 76,000 or something, and it's a real challenge that you have to stay in front of these needs. But we have space. Trying to cram a project like this into this area, I just do have concerns. And I, I think it's a beautiful project and I, I like it, I'm just not sure this is the right place for it. But I am concerned about overbuilding in general, and I have the same concerns with Boise and Canyon County as well. I mean, the numbers are, indicate the same concerns with overbuilding in these particular types of properties. Frankly, you make more money. I mean, no one's building affordable housing, because you're not, it's not, you're not making a lot of money. You're not going to build a Class, you know, a Class B apartment, because there's more money in these more higher-end, because you can charge more in rents. But you're not going to be able to charge more in rents if you continue to have, overdevelop and have some higher vacancy rates, which, you know, again, I guess we could probably argue with numbers over the applicant's and mine, and we might find some commonalities, but I do think that's a concern that you should be thinking about, mostly because just things are changing with the economy. It's not, you know, two or three years ago, maybe the numbers make more sense, but I think now you, you know, I think it makes sense to slow down just a little bit.
Thank you, Doug. Any further questions? Mr. Burnt.
You know, it's been a concern of mine for a long time as well. I don't think it's any secret that I'm in the flooring business, and so my business is totally predicated upon growth. You know, if we stop growth, I might become a Realtor, I have no idea. But I will say this, that the days of considering affordable housing at $160, $180 a square foot is absolutely asinine. It's crazy that we come and talk about affordable housing, it's so expensive. I mean, I said this two weeks ago, I mean, I remember my first house had laminate countertops, and all of a sudden nowadays, laminate countertops are like, like, it's like, stay away from laminate countertops. I'm like, it's unbelievable. And so I totally agree. I mean, the discussion in this council and in this city should be, and I'm not talking about government subsidized housing, I'm just talking about less, more affordable housing, you know, where people can work and truly work and live in Meridian. Because as we, I, I am, I have a bunch of subcontractors that work for me, very few of them live in Meridian, because they can't afford it. They can't afford to live here, because to buy a house is $180 a square foot, you know, it's okay to, it's okay to, I'm not anti-builder, I'm not anti-development. My, again, my business is predicated upon this. I just think that we need to start talking about affordable housing and how it can affect the living of the citizens of Meridian and get serious about it. Because I think it truly is a big problem.
Yeah, and if I may, I think what you'll find, I worked, I used to work in the Senate, and we had an issue in Sun Valley, and I know this is a different world, but they, they had such a problem with affordable housing that they had no other option but to have fully subsidized government housing that you're concerned about. We don't have to have fully government subsidized affordable housing right now, because if we're strategic and smart, there's ways we can go about it. However, if you don't address it, then you really are left with, left with very few options, and the pressure to like, use taxpayer monies to build affordable housing will be tremendous, and that's something that everyone wants to avoid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Starting to feel like you need to apologize, because I have Formica in my house, so. True confessions I have for Formica. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. David Ledford is next.
I think I'm going to be asking people their name, address, and if you have Formica or not. You don't have to answer that, if you'll just state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Ledford. I live at 670 West Clare Drive here in Meridian, Oregon. Just to kind of let you, Idaho, I'm sorry.
That's all right, it's 9:30 at Skinnley Lane.
You'll understand here in a moment.
Okay.
I just moved here from Oregon. I have spent the last 11 years up in Alaska. Several years ago, my wife and I decided we needed to start looking for a place to retire. In 2011, we decided on Meridian, Idaho. It was purely by accident. We came up here and loved the place. I mean, it was, it was where we wanted to be. When I got this information, this is the previous concept, and I don't see the change that I would like to see on the new concept. I would like to bring something to your attention. Everybody has talked about...
Sir, can you talk closer? Yes, thank you.
Let's come over here. Everybody has talked about different things. I want to add just, just a couple of things. First of all, accessibility to this property and where is that traffic going to go? We're down to 192 houses. I'm looking at probably 200 to 250 cars going to work every day and coming to home every day. If you look at the way this is set up, you've got one road going in and out of this thing. It all dumps onto Eustick, okay? It's one lane going out or coming in. That 250 cars are going to have to get in and out of there fairly quickly. Look where they're going to go. They're going to go into the existing subdivisions, they're going to go into my subdivision, they're going to go into the subdivisions off to the west. Those cars are going to impede on my livability. They're going to impede on the people that are here, their livability. Some of those kids that are going to school every day are going to have to be watching out for cars because of the high density. Okay, that's a concern to me. That's, that's our livability, and we have a right to talk to you about it, and that's what I'm doing. So that is a big issue to consider, please consider that. Okay, the next thing is, is roots. I came here to set down roots. This is my retirement, this is where my grandkids are going to come. First time in 11 years, I'm going to see my grandkids at Christmas time. That's important to me. I want those kids to be able to go out and play without dodging cars. The roads that are in my subdivision were not meant for that kind of traffic. There's no, there's no crosswalks, there's nobody there watching this traffic. When these people decide they're going to go to work and they have to deal with the rush hour, then what we've got is we've got frustrated people coming through the subdivisions, and then we've got kids going to school at the same time. I got one second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Boehner is next. Very good.
Good evening. Catherine Garcia, I live at 2970 Northwest 8th Avenue, Meridian, Idaho. I'm the little corner house there between 8th and Venable, right on Stan Hope, right there, so I'll be literally backing up to this. I appreciate Mr. Robnett that he has taken into account everybody's situation, everybody's input, given everything that's going in between what's going in on Meridian and Eustick, between what is being proposed, actually 160 units is being proposed on the corner of Eustick and Linder, and now this, so that's easily 500 units within a one-mile stretch. When I go to take my boys to school in the morning, there's easily five or six bus stops that come through because of all of the different schools that the children have, they can't go to their home school, so we've got houses that their kids go to multiple elementary schools even, and that's not even including all the various charter schools that there are here that get picked up. And they get picked up in the dark, and they get picked up on the corner of Blairmore and Eustick right there. And they all get picked up there in the dark, and so this is going to add traffic to that. That's not taking into account the bus stops that there are on Meridian. And what's, that impact... And what's, that impact is going to be with that when it becomes a four-lane road. With, I've literally watched on the way home from picking up my boys, the bus stops, the stop goes out, kids are in the middle of the street, the kid realizes he forgot his backpack, doesn't pay attention to see if there's any other cars coming, and books it back across. Thankfully, nobody was, thankfully, everybody was paying attention, so the little kindergartner wasn't on, you know, the six o'clock news. But that's happened. People don't pay attention. That's happened recently, that kids have been hit getting onto buses. This is going to, when the development goes through with the houses, that will dump the roads down into there. People will filter through there to get over to Meridian because we want to take the shortest route possible, right? We don't look for the longest route, we look for the quickest route possible. We've got Waze installed on our apps, on our phones, and where's the traffic and where's the blocks and where, how can we get through? This will filter through. On my little section, my little road, now that everybody's moved in, on any given afternoon, it's fantastic. There's easily fifteen to twenty kids playing out in the street, riding scooters, riding their bikes, playing football. It's fantastic. I don't want to have to tell my boys, hey, you can't go play because some idiot from the apartments isn't paying attention. This is too dense, this is too much going in. You're approving apartments already, things are already coming online, this doesn't take in anything into account of what's going in off of Franklin, what's going in off of Overland, what's already going in off of McMillan. All of that, so, thank you for your time.
Jennifer Kettle is next.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Kettle, I live at three seven seven West Sedgwick.
Thank you.
And, thank you, and I, I'm afraid I might have been lumped in with the time that was allotted elsewhere, but I just wanted to share, in terms of traffic, I work in healthcare, I have a thirty-minute response time to get to the hospital. When this happens, you know, when we get so much traffic, I'm concerned about the, the density of the traffic, but also, if you've ever read about the, the, the stories or the, the studies that they've done on the rats, these people are getting more and more upset, and there's so much road rage even on Meridian Road during the, the biggest parts of the traffic. It's just really concerning, I just really feel like Meridian is becoming so dense in this area that, that it just isn't the same neighborhood anymore. You know, people aren't, people aren't treating one another with respect like they were, and I feel like that the density is really entering into that problem, so.
Thank you.
Bonnie Kettle.
She also felt that she was allotted her time.
Thank you.
Tammy Emrick.
Thank you for sticking with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Tammy Emrick, I live at six nine two West Sedgwick Drive. My backyard backs up to the beautiful field that is going to be replaced, or the request is to be replaced, by this unit. The lady earlier stated that she had to see thirty units, and I look at the density that I'm going to have to see out of my backyard, and it doesn't quite compare to thirty, I'd be happy with thirty units. I drive into Boise every day to work, I come home on Meridian Road after work, and sometimes it takes, from the time I hit City, City Hall, to getting to my subdivision, easily twenty to thirty minutes on a busy day. And that's very concerning as we keep adding more growth. Councilman Burnt mentioned smart growth, and I think we really have to consider smart growth. Do we have the road infrastructure to support the big apartment complex going in, the prelude at Paramount? That's over four hundred units, and you can imagine how many cars are going to be, we're hitting Meridian Road. They're not widening, widening Meridian Road all the way to Chindon. And so that's a big concern, even if they widen from Cherry Lane to Eustick. We have six plexes, and there are four to six plexes going in there on the corner of Meridian and Sedgwick. And I think, I'm an educator, I've been in education for thirty years, and I think about the kids and the infrastructure. And I al, I don't teach in Meridian or West Ada School District, I did in the past, that's why I said Meridian School District, but I always feel very badly when I think of West Ada and the number of students that they have in classrooms, and how those students aren't getting the education that they need because we keep building and building and building, and we can't keep up with that. And so I would ask that you really consider that density. I would ask that you really look at, do we have the, the roads and the infrastructure to support this type of building that's going on in, in this area? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Mike Emrick.
Good evening, Mike Emrick, six nine two West Sedgwick, married to Tammy. Yeah, a lot, I think a lot of the concerns that have been brought forth are concerns of mine. I do worry about ingress and egress here. I just do not see an easy flow in and out of, of this proposed development. I think we are going to see a lot of this traffic being pushed into Valens Court and then on out into Meridian Road, which, if anybody drives that, you know that it doesn't have the capacity. The other thing about the Valens Court subdivision is it's, it's very much a serpentine now, and I just see a lot of people snaking through that, and, and really having no other option. I, I know that we talk about roads getting widened and, you know, all of these great things are going to happen to accommodate the traffic, but the truth is there, you know, really isn't money for that, and, so we don't really know when those timelines are. When I drive around this area now, I see a lot of apartments. I see a lot of apartments that have been under construction for years, and I begin to think that, why are, why are we doing all of this here? There's going to be so many people out that way, and we just don't have the infrastructure for it. Why do we need all that high-density, you know, building there? It just doesn't make sense. The other thing that I do have, and maybe it is for the applicant, because I, I see these, these are, these are supposed to be single-family residents here in the yellow area, okay. Now, is that this area here? So that's the same area, that's, that's part of your, your development still.
Sir, if you can direct your questions through me.
Oh, okay, so, the question I had, were these, the single-family homes that were to be in the Somerville?
Yes.
Okay. It just looked a little different than, than that. So that's, that's my concern, I think it's the traffic, I think it's getting overbuilt, it's too dense, and I do compliment the developer, because I do think this, this is a better rendering. I still think it's too dense.
Thank you.
Good evening. Igor Osipchuk, two eight seven eight North Ridge Haven Way, Meridian, Idaho, eight three six four six. I wasn't going to come out and say anything, but I'm still concerned, I like it, the redesign, I think the redesign is better where it used to be. I'm still against apartment complex, it's, it's right directly from my house where I live, not something you want to see. I agree with everybody who said anything about the traffic. I see it all the time, even though it's my subdivision when I was a dead-end, dead-end subdivision, but every time they close the road on Eustick or anything like that, everybody's trying to go through that subdivision, trying to cut across to get back on Eustick, and as soon as they open this, I am pretty sure everybody's going to cut the traffic and try to make it to, to the other end. That's, that happens all the time. I live on a dead-end street, every time people turn around on my street, on, on my driveway, so, and I'm pretty sure that's going to get even worse once it opens, I mean, everybody's going to go through there. I don't like three-story apartments in there, I don't think it fits, two-story fits a whole lot better, so if this project to be continued, I think two-story would definitely complement the area a whole lot better than three-story. And I do agree with staff that even if they continue with the three-story, there should be more transition to those two, three, couple buildings that come out to the other houses that plan to build, I think they should be reduced to two stories to transition a little bit better. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all that indicated they wanted to provide testimony.
Can I give you this photograph? I just want to give it to you guys.
You can give it to our city clerk.
I think a better view of what is actually going on in that neighborhood than what has been presented to you, what, what these things that you saw here.
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry, you can't give walking testimony. If you'll please state your, state your name and address.
John Carver, seven three zero West Clare. What was originally presented to you, the original, showed Eustick before it was even finished in its construction. What was going on on the side on Venable was not shown, and I don't think it shows anywhere the real connection of where you have to go when you leave that area. If you want to get out on the Meridian Road, the only way you can do it is to go through my subdivision, and there's no speed bumps, there's no, there's a couple of stop signs, there's nothing that's going to stop people from zooming around and going up Indian Rocks, there's nothing going to stop folks. And I know that if I lived in those apartments, that's exactly what I would do, trying to get out of, get out of what there is there, they, get out of that neighborhood. So if, if you can just consider that, or at least these folks can come up with some way to stop that traffic from coming through our area, speed bumps perhaps, something at their cost that they could do to mitigate that additional traffic that'll be coming down. There's an awful lot of kids, awful lot of kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Richard Garcia, I live at twenty-nine seventy Northwest Eighth Street, Meridian, Idaho.
Good evening, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. If we could go back to the, the photo that has the, the proposal, that has the two plans, thank you. I have a big concern on the south, southern two exits there, the exit that exits to the west, that's at the southwest there, to Venable. There's already a street there, but this street is not aligning with that street, and the street that's actually the proposed apartments is exiting right into people's backyards, and I've seen too many times here, in the short time that we've lived here, that people during these winters that we get slide off the roads, and I'm concerned that they're going to slide right into those backyards. And I know that those houses that are there have children. Why can't we have a proposal that goes with the existing roads that are there? That's, I guess, my question, and, and a concern, that I'd hope you guys understand where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Can you put that, that photo up again?
Madam Mayor, may I ask you?
Yes.
I'm Emma Bailey at seven zero six West Indian Rocks, Meridian, Idaho, and I've loved Meridian for a long time. My brother's spot boxers at the old Meridian High School, so I'm used to it. But high density in a very small area, we can't stand anymore in our neighborhood. We can never hardly get out. Meridian Road, you might as well plan high timed, because you will not get out. It's dangerous, people are darting out, and as a retired nurse, I think with more, you can see by this map, it's very high density. If there's emergencies, police emergencies, anything like that, it's going to be almost impossible to get into these areas. We have to stop the density. We need to develop, because this is a beautiful place for people to come, but not stuck together like we would be in the inner cities of New York or San Francisco. And I, I really hope and pray you'll consider this. Developers need to build, but not on a little lot like that to put so many families. I think it would be a very wrong thing to do for Meridian. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further testimony? Well, you all changed your mind about giving your, your time up, didn't you? I, I guess that is your prerogative.
Hi, my name's Charlie Soboleski, I live at twenty-six fifty-one North Ridgeberry Avenue. And there's been a lot of great testimony here tonight, I think the applicant's got a good plan. I agree with Councilman Burnt, square peg, round hole. You look at this map right here, we kind of cracked open the bottle a little bit to the west, some high density went in, and now the dam is broken, and we're looking at more and greater, and it's just flooding. So I just wanted to reinforce everything we talked about here tonight, saying, let's think about what we're doing, look at what's there, everybody's bought into what's there, they like what's there, they'd like to see more of that grow there, not this square peg and round hole. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any further testimony? At this time, I'll ask the applicant to come up and respond to some of the testimony and, and give wrap-up remarks.
Madam Mayor, members of the council.
If you can restate your name for the record.
My name is Shannon Robnett, I live at fifty-one oh three Zamora, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
I brought a copy of this for each one of you, this is part of the market study we had done by a national firm that highlights the area, so I've got a copy for each of you. And while I don't disagree with a lot of what Doug said, I think it's very important to understand that what Doug's talking about is proposed projects, not actually permitted projects. We are very well aware, and if you turn to the, let's see, it's the first, second, third, fourth, fifth page, you'll see that there's a graph there, right here in this corner, that shows that there's twelve hundred and thirty-five units being proposed roughly every year for the potential future pipeline, but then you have to apply that fifty percent margin. So then you wind up with about seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty that get built every year. We also show that that's roughly the demand that's being absorbed. So I get that, but I also understand that capitalism does work, and supply and demand would definitely take care of affordable housing. would definitely take care of affordable housing. See, you can downgrade a five-star to a three-star by changing the interior finishes, doing some other things to get it done, but you can never upgrade a three-star. I would have never thought that you could come in here and propose affordable housing in this area. It would have never flown with the neighbors. So while I understand that, and I get that, I just don't think it's possible. So downgrading would be a possibility, should the market change on us, I think we could do that. But we also might be part of that 50%. We might get approval tonight, we might not develop here for years. The other project I'm working on right after this one is 225 units in the area that's been developed and proposed and ready for a set of building permit plans to be submitted to the city with no development agreement, or with a development agreement, but no plans have been drawn since 2012, still not built on, ready to go. We did provide in our last go-around back, gosh, first part of the year, an email from the superintendent of schools that said that they did have capacity for the schools in the immediate area to house, to take care of the children. We do have that in the records, if you'd like to look at that. We also did a traffic study that showed that we are at less than 50% capacity on Eustick Road after ours. We also, in that traffic study, showed that less than one-third of ours would choose to go through, not that nobody won't, would choose to go through the neighborhood behind us, but we would have more of their traffic come forward onto Venable than we would produce traffic into their neighborhood. So that traffic study was done by a professional, not a buddy of mine, and that was submitted to staff, and that was part of the, of the record. And it does show that we are under capacity on those roads by a long shot, even the Indian Rocks Road that keeps being mentioned, and that subdivision back there. If you guys will remember, those of you that were here in 2007, school coffers were full when we were building Mountain View School. It wasn't the struggle that it is now to get schools built, and that's part of the development cycle. As things happen, permit fees are generated, money's come forward, and things begin to happen. And that's part of what that cycle is. And unfortunately, we're at the bottoms, we're at the upswing of that cycle again, so those things have to be happening, and it's unfortunate. But my kids are affected by that too, because they go to Rocky and they go to Heritage. And I'm, I'm in the area, so I understand this as, as well as anybody here does. Also, can we go back to the elevation, or the, the picture that the nice gentleman brought of the surrounding area? We keep doing that to you, CJ, about the time you think you're done. So, let's see, if we orient ourselves here. So if you look here where they talked about our road not lining up and being offset to Eighth Street, the real reality is if you look to the east, there are two other roads, three other roads that we have to line up with in the future, and we can't do that if we go straight on with Eighth Street. We cannot, we don't provide a logical intersection at the property directly to the east, and then it creates a very small, almost unusable lot on the property furthest to the east that then abuts the development again. So our proposal with staff was worked through with ACHD, and they felt that to meet the Meridian code about the road offsets, this would be the best way to do it moving forward. So those are all great points, and I really appreciate what the neighbors had to say. We did try and address those, and these are how that we, we've come up with this, and literally been working on this from the very beginning, and, and have done, I think we've done a great job. And so with that, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I don't, I don't see the, the school district letter.
It was in our previous slide presentation that we did last time. Was that PDF, the presentation that we gave you, Bill, was that part of the public record? Can you pull that up?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so it would be part of the public record and the minute book for that particular meeting, not necessarily if he.
Yeah, I was looking for it too.
If he presented it during his presentation, it's part of the minute book.
So, Madam Mayor, I guess we know where, where it is, but it's not in the packet itself, it's in the minutes. Same thing with the TIS, it's not in the packet. I don't recall.
The CIS?
The Traffic Impact.
Okay, yes.
Oh, ACHD in December of 17 indicated one would be required at a future point. It sounds like you've done one now, but.
That's correct, and that was.
I don't see the study in there.
It was turned in to staff.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I don't see the traffic study on, on Lisa Fish either as part of the record. I just saw ACHD's comments that they would require one.
Right. And we, we were required to do that, and we're required to turn it in with our application.
So, a little disconnect, but we probably could figure that out. If you've submitted it, but we can't find it.
Well, in Bill's defense, we submitted to Josh.
The city, though. All right.
Did you submit it when you turned in this updated plan?
We submitted it with our original application.
Oh, okay.
The impact study?
We were required to.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if my memory serves me correctly, this started back in November, December, this project of 2017. Typically, ACHD will not require a traffic study with an annexation request. That usually happens with a subdivision or something that generates trips. I don't, I'm, I'm not saying Josh may not have received that or not, I'm just saying I've never seen a traffic study for this. I know when we met with the applicant, back sometime in December, they were in the process of doing that. I know they had a consultant, they were doing that work, because ACHD wanted to see some of that analysis. But again, with an annexation, they don't really have a lot of authority at that point. They're mostly, their authorities were plat and subdivisions. So a lot of times, if we don't capture their requirements in a development agreement, you know, we don't get comments until the property's subdivided and they hit those thresholds. Again, in this particular case, I would imagine, I don't, I don't know what the thresholds are going to be as part of this development. Again, we leaned towards ACHD for that. I don't even see an updated staff report, which is strange to me, because I remember working with ACHD on the alignment of Stan Hope and A Street, and we all agreed that it would be offset, and it was a safer situation. And if my memory serves me correctly, Kent Brown even testified to that before you as well. Those were things that were, ACHD had changed their original recommendation. So let us, let us get to the bottom of this and try to get the right information for you. But right now, none of that information, what I can see, I'm looking at the public record, I don't see it either.
Bill, if you remember, I believe when we originally submitted this, we submitted this as a subdivision, because we had to have a will-serv letter, and we had to draw out the subdivision lots. That's what brought that along on the back. And at that point, ACHD did require us to do that traffic study.
I'll, I'll, I'll pull up the application and see what you submitted, because I'm seeing 25 pages, and usually a traffic study's more than 25 pages.
Yes, it is.
For sure.
Still about 35 bucks a page. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I guess while he's looking for that, what kind of sparked all of that one to make sure we're, we're seeing everything? But the 20, the December 2017 ACHD staff report that's here, is that the only, is there only one?
There's only one that's been done, yeah. From there, we've reduced the number of units to reduce the impact on the area. So.
Madam Mayor, there's a comment on this last page of that staff report that makes reference to a significant change in the land use design. May necessitate a re-review by ACHD. Did you visit with them once redesigned? You've made drastic changes?
Well, I think that, I, I don't think ACHD would be too upset at us if we dropped our density by 25%, but we would definitely do that. Our direction when we left here last was to go solve our problem with Ada County, come back here, see if we were going to gain approval. If so, there's no problem with that being a condition of the approval. But I, I, I would find it very, very, very surprising that that much has changed, that dropping it by over, almost 100 units would impact ACHD's recommendation. I, I, I would struggle that they would be that short-sighted that 12 months would change that, especially with the reduction, and they'd already seen the traffic study.
Fewer trips, for sure.
Say again?
Fewer trips.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And this does say that River Valley is not at capacity, but River Valley is two miles from this location.
That's the school that we were told serves this area.
Huh. You stumped me on that one.
That's why I asked this, the person that we asked, that, we asked Joe over there, because he knows about that. I, I didn't know about that, so we just asked them how, how, how the school was doing.
Is, is it because the schools closer by are at capacity, and so this is the, the next option?
Either that, or I don't know how the district was ever laid out, that maybe this area was never designated to go to those schools. I know that my daughter lived right across the street from a school and was going to a different school that was, she was never, would have never been in that district across McMillan for her to ever have gone to that school. It just was never designed that way. So.
Any other questions for Shannon? Phil, did you have something to add?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, I wanted to provide clarification. So the applicant applied for annexation only, and per our checklist, there is no requirement for confirmation from ACHD that a traffic study is required. So we do not have that as part of the application submitted.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
You did submit a traffic study.
Yes, we did.
And so we'll, we'll want to find that. Counsel, any, any further questions?
Thank you.
At this point, counsel, there's no further testimony, and I, I see that if you want to have discussion, if you have further questions for, for staff, I know they have not had time to do a full evaluation with this updated plan, so we're, we're looking for your direction on this. Ms. Love Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I really don't like the thought of continuing another one, but yet it seems like we don't have all the information that we need. I feel like we need an updated staff report as well as a traffic impact study if, when, if we have one. So, anybody else weighing with that, if we should think about waiting till we have full information?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I agree with you. Sometimes that might be necessary to make sure we've got an ability to make the right decisions, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
If the traffic study was the concern, wouldn't we be safe approving it with the condition that ACHD also be cool with it?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Perhaps. I know compliance with all conditions from ACHD is one of the conditions that he'd be agreeing to as part of this application, but I think it was some of the opening comments from staff that said if, if this were to proceed, to be considered for approval, staff needs additional time to, to vet the changes, when it's due diligence. If there's any, if there were any concerns, it would be probably helpful to the applicant too, to be made aware of them before we made decisions. So if the time affords them the ability to do that, it seems to be prudent.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burt.
One of the options we spoke of is a possibility, sending it back to P&amp;Z, and changes were significant enough to have them look at it one more time. Just, I'm not saying I would support that, just an option to talk about.
Right there? Sorry.
You have all kinds of options. Mr. Borton.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to continue this. I'm doing it because I'm not of the mindset that, that, let me, let me start over. I don't think there, this is an insurmountable problem. I think my, some of the concerns that I expressed last time, I think the applicant's addressed a lion's share of them. We're looking at this still with the landscape of, of, you know, a mixed-use community designation on our comp plan that has contemplated this type of density at this location. The future land use map is consistent with that too, so the requested zoning designation is consistent with what we planned for and what's been incorporated into, you know, the school district's planning, the highway district's planning, has all been made well aware of how dense this would, would be. So the, the changes that have been made are, are well-received, at least by me. I think the applicant's gone a long way to try and scale this back, both in its design and in its density, to, to meet in the middle and still be compliant with what we had expressed to, to the applicant to be the intent for this location. So I think additional time with staff can help avoid any snags, should we be missing something. But I'm generally favorable and hopeful that this might be able to proceed after staff gives it a second. I don't know if there's any other comment. Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
If there's no other comment, I'd move that we continue H 2018, excuse me, 2017-0142 to November 20th. Second.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if, if I could, if you'd allow time, staff adequate time to analyze the changes, I would propose at least, at a minimum, December 4th.
Let me restate that, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I misspoke. I meant to say December 4th.
Second.
And, and, little just quick comment.
Okay.
As part of that. The, the comment from, comments that we've received from the public, both here at this meeting and in prior meetings, and, and writing as well, I think have certainly been considered and reviewed, and, and the review of the revised application. Take those to heart as well, to make sure that, to the extent those can be addressed, that they are.
And so some of those documents you're looking for is maybe an official letter from the school district, and I thought they had one at one time. But if not, they usually weigh in on these.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. I think what the applicant was referring to, though, in that letter, was what we were able to pull up onto the screen during your discussion.
If, if we can request that, and, and if the school district can perhaps comment on why Discover, or River Valley is the home school for a development on the west side of Meridian Road would be interesting. The traffic impact study, and, and that certainly, the impact study was for a higher density as, as I understand. Staff, comments on conditions of development updated to this current plan. Any, anything further, Mr. Borton?
No, unless there's something else from council to add to it.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to continue this application to December 4th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all ayes, wish carried. Thank you for hanging in there with us. We appreciate that. Okay, item, item H was remanded back, we already took action on that, so item 8I is a public hearing for H 2018-0079. We'll open this public hearing with. is a public hearing for H 2018-0079. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Next item on the agenda is the Burlingame subdivision. The site consists of 18.99 acres of land, currently zoned R4 in the city limits, and it's located near the northwest corner of West Cherry Lane and North Black Hat Road. In 2017, the city council approved a previous preliminary plat and development agreement modification to allow the applicant to develop 60 single-family lots consistent with the previous approvals. The current comprehensive plan designation for this particular property is low-density residential, which is three or less dwelling units to the acre. The applicant is here this evening to discuss a rezone, a preliminary plat, and again, another development agreement modification to develop the property with 74 residential lots in a proposed R8 zoning district. Because the applicant has increased the number of lots over the previous plan, the applicant is requesting a step up in density from the city council this evening. There is an existing home that is part of the development agreement. I believe council probably remembers that discussion. It's located here near the southwest, or excuse me, the southeast corner of the development along Cherry Lane. Again, the conditions that were placed in that development agreement will run with this land and still remain in place for this particular property. It's just not a lot in block within the subdivision. So, the preliminary plat on the left-hand side is what you approved last year, which had the 60 lots, and the new preliminary plat is the 74 lots, right on the right-hand side. So, just for your information, density has increased approximately from 3.1 dwelling units to the acre to 3.9. So, not a large increase in density, but there is an increase. The applicant is proposing to extend a stub street from the north from the Turnberry Crossing subdivision, like the previous plan. More roadway with this particular plan. One access is proposed at the south boundary to Cherry Lane, and there is a stub street to the west and east boundary in accordance with ACHD's policies and our comprehensive plan. The positive aspect of this particular project over the previous one is the applicant's actually proposing more open space than the previous plan, along with more amenities. So, along with that request for a step up, the applicant does have interconnected pathways, a tot lot, a pond, and a segment of the multi-use pathway as part of the master pathways plan. The applicant is also requesting a waiver from council to tile two of the laterals that'll run along the north boundary. So, we have Settlers Canal and then the Stafford lateral along the north boundary here. Those are large facilities, and they're asking for your waiver this evening. The applicant did provide some conceptual building elevations for you to take under consideration. These are, again, required as part of the development agreement for them to comply with complementary building materials to what's actually in the surrounding developments. We have a mix of wood siding, corbels, covered porches, two and three-car garages. Staff is amenable with the proposed subdivision and elevations before you this evening. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval at their hearing. Speaking in favor, we had Becky McKay. In opposition, we had Carrie Donahue, and then commenting on the applicant was William McEwen and Carrie Donahue, and then Jeanette O'Brien provided written testimony on the application, and Josh Beach presented the application at P&amp;Z hearing. So, key items of discussion was, with the subject application was the depth of the sewer to the property to the east of this development, located, I believe, is 521, or 5120 West Cherry Lane, and then there was concerns about increased traffic through the Turnberry Crossing subdivision to the north. Key issues of discussion by the commission, the improvement in the design and open space over the previous plan. They liked this, the new plan better from the previous, and they were also open to more open space and better amenities. Key changes from the commission, there weren't any, and then, again, the two outstanding issues for you this evening is whether or not you support the step up in density, the slight increase in density, and then also the waiver of the irrigation facilities. I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions? Bill, can you show on the plat real quick where those irrigation facilities are?
Excuse me, the canals run along the north boundary of this subdivision, in between Turnberry Crossing, along the, they're north, or south of Turnberry Crossing and then north of this proposed subdivision. So, it's this large area here between the two developments.
And it's a waiver of two different facilities?
That is correct. That is correct.
Counsel, any questions from that? Would the applicant like to come forward? Welcome.
You just can't get rid of me tonight, sorry about that.
I'm going.
Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, 1029 North Rosario. I'm representing the applicant, Yuri Mukha, on this particular application. There we go. As Bill indicated, this property is 18.99 acres. It's a consolidation of multiple parcels. There are two existing homes on the property. It's located just north of Cherry Lane and west of Black Cat Road. The property initially was annexed and zoned into the city of Meridian clear back in 2006, and a development was approved and construction plans were drawn on the property, and it was called Incline Village. That preliminary plat approval expired. The project was never built, and then Yuri purchased the property and brought it through, and had approximately 60 lots on the parcel and the existing zoning of R4. After, this is kind of gives you an aerial of the property, so you can see the existing homes. There's an existing home here, an existing home located here, and then this is the out parcel that they did a record of survey that was initially split off right here. And so, the parcel runs up here. This is the Safford lateral on the north side under Nampa Meridian Irrigation District. On the south side is the Settlers Southern Canal, and then it's piped right through here. We have an existing stub street to Turnberry Subdivision located at this location. This is the project that was approved. I did read through the minutes, the staff report. There was a considerable amount of discussion on the fact that the primary open space was cleared down here on Fairview or Cherry Lane, and the fact that the project just was kind of disjointed, not really neighborhood-friendly. There was inadequate area allocated for the two waterways, and so there was some issues that they ended up working through. They did get approved. After obtaining approval, then Yuri went and met with multiple real estate agents and developers, builders, and they basically critiqued the project, and he didn't get that warm of a welcome. So, he had seen me at the hearing at Sky Mesa, and so he came, ended up on my doorstep and said, you know, "Could you take a look at this?" He said, you know, "I just, I just think that something better could be done on this property." And, you know, a lot of people have critiqued it, and they've said they don't like this, or they don't like that. So, I kind of took a look at it, and my recommendation was, one, they basically scraped the home that they were trying to work around at this location, and that this was the nicer home that was located on the property, and that could be retained. But if they got rid of the second one, then that would obviously open up the project to a lot better layout. So, what we did is, we evaluated it and looked at the market conditions, and as we were evaluating it, prices were escalating rapidly in the city of Meridian. And so, you know, the big question that we all look at is affordability, you know? Where are these prices going? Where are they going to stop? And so, in looking at the project, you know, I told Yuri, you know, it's kind of an infill parcel, and based on the shape and the, what we can do with our amenities, if we reduce the lot sizes and went for an R8 designation, which would slightly increase the density from 60 dwelling units to 74, so it was an increase of 14 dwelling units, then that would give us a little better flexibility in creating pathways. So, they had an open space back here, but there was controversy about their pond. There's intermittent water delivery to this property from settlers, and so, I told Yuri, you know, "We've got to pipe water to the north across to Cherry Lane to the adjoining property. My recommendation would be to put your irrigation pond located here at the entrance." So, one, it's passive amenity, it's aesthetically pleasing, but it also has a functional purpose. There was concerns from Turnberry about the pump station being located back by them and the noise associated with it. So, here, obviously, being up at Cherry Lane, that would eliminate that. I added an island at the entrance landscaping here. We have an access for, to take this existing home so that it can connect to, we have a sewer stub, a water stub, and then an approach, so it can eventually eliminate that access to Cherry Lane in the future. The original stub street to the east was located here. I talked to Mr. McEwen, who owns this property here, and he asked me, he said, you know, "From our perspective, we would prefer that you move the stub street south, because that would better serve the redevelopment of our property, because we're contemplating the possibility of a Montessori school." And I told him, "I'd be glad to do that, because the stub street is for your benefit, not ours," and so I did relocate that stub street. We have a stub street going to the west that will eventually serve these properties as they redevelop. Our sewer service is here. There's an existing, there's an LDS church and another church located here. This is zoned LO. It's R4 to the north, R8 to the south. The sewer line, we will connect and extend through here. So, I have a pedestrian access, and then a multi-use pathway and landscaping. These are existing trees that are on the property all along the north and east boundary, so we're going to retain those. And then that multi-use pathway will go along the Settlers Canal, then we drop it back into the project through this micropath here. So, basically creates a loop. To address the concerns of the council staff, the planning zoning commission, from the original proposal, we created this 14,000-square-foot common area here with a playground and a gazebo and landscaping, and then we put another pedestrian pathway that comes down and then links to the stub street here. So, initially, you know, we have a piece of property that's been sitting there, annexed and zoned for 12 years and has not developed. And so, you know, I took it upon myself to figure out something that I thought would be more marketable and would develop and be built as proposed. And we increased the density, but we also increased the open space. The initial open space was just barely at 10%. It also had some flaws in it as far as their pathways, their allocation of their common, or their, or separate lot for the waterways, and we boosted that to almost 12%. This particular design, we feel, is what we call a more walkable design. We have lots that range in 5,600 square feet. Our largest lot is this existing home, which is 34,000. But our average lot size in this project is 7,152 square feet. We also have lots that vary in depth from approximately 102 to 150 feet, and that's just kind of how it worked out. But it does provide alternatives to different lifestyles. The second, the, this pocket park, as I indicated, is 14,000 square feet, and then down here, we have 26,000 square feet here. So, we feel we'll have a nice, a nice aesthetic look, and like I said, this is a passive amenity as you come in. Our active amenity is up here internally and located in, kind of in the middle of the project. Water service, there's a 12-inch water main that's located in Cherry Lane that we'll connect and extend. Then there's also an 8-inch water stub here that's in Turnberry. Turnberry, years ago, put in trust a certain dollar amount for the crossing here of the Safford lateral, but it will be our responsibility to construct this bridge or pipe across these two waterways. And we think, you know, what's before you is superior to what was approved. Yuri and I, like I said, worked for quite a while to come up with the amenity package that we think will obviously make this attractive. We're looking at kind of empty nester types, but even empty nesters have grandkids, so I encouraged him to have playground equipment, and that was one of the things I read in the planning and zoning commission comments, that they'd like to see a playground in his development. And then we have the gazebo, the retainage of the existing spruce trees, and our interconnecting path and pond. This kind of shows you the blow-up of the pond area here at the entrance, so we, you know, we have a lot of extensive landscaping, and like I said, it's going to have a nice, clean feel as you drive into it, and our first lots are here. The sewer, basically, when we reach this point, is coming right at its maximum, or not maximum, it'll come out of the ground if I extend it any further south. You can see, here's our pocket park here with the pathways, the gazebo and the playground. This is the existing home that's located on the eastern side. Like I said, we're providing a sewer and a water stub, and then a approach to our street. Currently, the property has a garage which is oriented to Cherry Lane. There's, in the development agreement, as Bill indicated, a 25-foot landscape easement. There's landscaping there, but it will be encumbered by the original requirements. Here's some elevations of the homes that we intend to build on the lots. They're primarily, they're, they'll be two-story and single-story with two-car garages. You know, some will be, you know, like I said, empty nester-type homes with the smaller yards. Others, we have deeper lots that'll accommodate larger homes and for family life. As far as sewer-ing to the property to the, to the south of us, this driveway here, there was staff comment that the driveway exceeded the maximum length, that a turnaround would be required based on the fire department. We did contact the fire department. The shared driveway will terminate right here at this lot. This will just be an easement for the sewer to stub to this property located at that location. So, we will not exceed that 150-foot maximum length. We think we have a good project that's before you, and like I said, you know, it's our job to obviously, you know, come up with plans that are marketable, and this particular property's gone through a couple of renditions that have not been successful, but we believe that what was before you this evening will be built and will obviously contribute to the housing needs of the city of Meridian. Do you have any questions, or can I answer any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
William McEwen signed up to testify.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for your time. I know it's late. I'm going to make this very brief, and I'm going to make it very pointed so that everybody understands exactly where I'm coming from. As she pointed out, I live on exactly where I'm coming from. Um, as she pointed out, I live on the five acres that is, uh, west and north of this project. And, uh, on the south side is Cherry Lane. My address is fifty-one twenty West Cherry Lane in Meridian, Idaho. Did I give you my name?
I don't think you did.
William McEwen.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so they're asking for a change from R four to R eight, and, uh, Bill Parsons, uh, Mr. Parsons, that was, the smaller lots was, 'cause they're gonna be marketing to fifty-five and older, is that correct? Is that what the, uh, is that what the original meeting was with the planning commission?
How was it projected at the planning and zoning commission?
That was, that was the reason for the increase in density, correct?
Their, their proposal is that's what they think the market is looking for.
Okay, alright. Just wanted to make sure there was clarification there. Um, I'm in the county, and so is my neighbor, right here, Mr. Kent Blake. And, uh, we're R U T. So, we're going from an R U T to a proposed R eight. And, uh, we would expect a little bit of a transition zone, just like you want a transition zone off of streets to projects of yours. We would expect a transition zone from our product, our property to this project. And, uh, a transition zone, a buffer, whatever you wanna call it. And, um, we love our current country living and lifestyle and would like to be able to maintain that as much as possible without causing a, any kind of hardship for this project. I know that, uh, they've spent a lot of money and time on this. I am totally open to, to, uh, moving forward and progress and all that good stuff, but we need to do it smart. Um, we own a Montessori school. Uh, we are looking at expanding that Montessori school. And so we have little children running around on our property. And it's with that, that we're asking that there's be no two-story homes placed on the border of our property, or at the very least, no two-story windows facing our property. And we talk about a buffer zone, we talk about transition zones all the time. We're asking that people cannot look down into our playground, cannot look it down into our existing pool that we have. And because they're marketing to older, um, to what they believe is gonna be the older, uh, uh, people, they don't want two-story homes anyway. And so, it just makes sense that we stamp that, make sure that we don't have people looking out their, uh, bedroom windows down onto our playground. That's, that's what we're asking. Uh, there's one more issue, and that's with the fire hydrants. If you drive down Cherry Lane, you will not see one fire hydrant anywhere off of Black Cat and Cherry Lane. And because they're putting in this, uh, project, uh, we think it would be a very good idea i- if they were to install a fire hydrant on the, on the stub, so at least, uh, my property has a fire hydrant next to it and it can be run across to Kent's place as well. I realize this is an imposition and we'd be willing to pay for that. Uh, just makes sense to put it in at this time. Do you, does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? We appreciate you being with us tonight.
And what I'm asking for sound reasonable to you?
I, I think you need to look out for yourself and, and ask for what you need.
That sounds like a very good political answer.
Well, I don't think it's my call, so.
No other signups indicating testimony, Madam Mayor.
Denise?
Denise LeFevere, six-seven-zero-six North Selvia Way, Meridian, Idaho. Um, I personally am not fond of this project. This project has come before council before. It's, it was annexed to sixty properties, then sixty-four last year is what they asked for an increase. And now we're asking for a step up, a step up merely to get smaller lots, more density. The largest feature on this property is a, a holding pond used for holding irrigation water. Um, we went from cul-de-sacs to shared driveways. The transition that's on here that goes up against the five acres, those are smaller lots. It'd be nice if those were bigger lots on the backside of that. It also isn't compatible with the other neighborhoods around it. The other neighborhoods around the area are fours. This is an R eight. So, you know, one of these things too, is I'd like to see them be able to, to be, build this in an R four configuration, the way that it, the way that it should be. And the amenities on here, I'd like to see real amenities and not holding ponds.
Thank you, Denise. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Denise, you, you mentioned the cul-de-sacs to shared driveways. Do you see shared driveways as diminishing the quality of the development?
Yes, I live next to a shared driveway and they are nothing but a headache. They, when you go back and you pull out your trash cans, you have an issue now because there's not enough room for trash cans to go out. You have an issue when somebody goes back and does lan- if this is really being sold to, um, older people, fifty-five and older, or empty nesters, they're not gonna necessarily do all the landscaping work themselves. My neighbors don't. So now you have them blocking your driveway. It's nothing but a headache. And then you have the responsibility, who's taking care of it? I personally don't like seeing shared driveways. I don't see where it increases the livability of your neighborhood. Cul-de-sacs are great. You can park a car in the middle. They're, they move around. They're a much better quality of life. So.
Madam Mayor, um, I mean, looking at the shared driveways on here, it looks like there's ample opportunity for trash can placement. Um, I mean, the southeast one probably would have to go across the street, but then the other one's right there against that other green space. Um, I've owned two homes in my life. Uh, my last house was in a cul-de-sac. Lots of turnarounds, including fire truck, back and forth a hundred times. So, I understand this way it is. Now I live on a shared driveway, and I love it. Um, right next to Morgan, I don't know if she's commented on it. The reason for me, we talk a lot about children's safety. We've had a lot of people testify tonight about, um, you know, my kids are playing in the street and they won't be safe because there'll be more cars on the road. No kidding. Um, roads are for driving, driveways, the word would, it's anyway, driving. But, uh, our shared driveway, because we're all right there, we're all each other's neighbors, there's nobody else using our shared driveway. We all know each other's kids and we know, um, each other well enough to know that we all need to pull in very slowly. So, all of our kids are always out in the shared driveway and none of us ever worry at all about it. Um, so, there's my rant on.
We'll just have a difference of opinion. I, I hate shared driveways. I'm just very blessed that I love my neighbors. I have wonderful neighbors, so that makes it much more enjoyable. But I hate the shared driveway. I would never buy on another shared driveway ever again. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further testimony? Okay. Becky?
Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions. Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, as far as the shared driveways, we only have two. We have this one that benefits, um, basically these two lots. Then we have one here that benefits these two lots. So it's not like, you know, we've incorporated a, a significant number of shared driveways. This shared driveway, the one reason that I did it that way is because we need to get the sewer to this point for future sewer serviceability of these properties. Um, so, stay, your staff likes that to either be in a public street or in some type of a paved-type surface. And so, this one is kind of ended up being out of necessity because I didn't wanna pull the street down there, because then it would, it would severely encumber the redevelopment of this lot if you had multiple stub streets to it. Secondly, the question on the lot sizes. Um, I mean, like I indicated, you know, our lot sizes, our average is over seven thousand. My largest lots are next to this five-acre lot, Mr. McEwen's. This particular lot here is ten thousand square feet. These are ranging from seventy-four to seventy-five hundred square feet. Um, I did consider the fact, you know, his house is oriented down here next to Cherry Lane. So back here, it's basically just the pasture. One of the reasons that I put this twenty-foot, uh, landscape strip here was to create that buffer. Um, so this'll be a twenty-foot landscape buffer with just a five-foot pathway that leads here to our amenity. And then the depth of these lots is one hundred and thirty-five feet. So, you add in the twenty feet, the hundred and thirty-five feet, that's a hundred and fifty-five foot depth, um, a significant separation when you figure the driveway's gonna be only twenty feet into the lot. Um, so, I didn't wanna lay houses and have, you know, just a hundred foot depth right next to him. So we've done, you know, what we can. I did the same thing over here to the west side. My largest lots, uh, ranging in the, the seven thousands, uh, are up in this particular area here. And the, the smaller lots are localized internally. Um, you also have to consider, we have two churches that adjoin us. Um, the two churches, um, we have this, this drive here. I see a lot of these people walking to church. Um, I think we see a lot of elderly people that wanna live near their churches, especially the LDS churches. Um, and this project is a, you know, it's an unusual-shaped property. And I think we've basically done everything we can to make it as attractive as possible and add these amenities and add the pathways, um, and compensate for the increase in density. Um, I wouldn't be before you this evening asking for additional lots and increase in the density if I hadn't done what I felt was appropriate to increase the open space and incorporate more amenities. And that's what we've done. Um, as far as the hydrant back here for Mr. McEwen, um, I think that's probably your public work staff. Uh, we show a hydrant located here and then another one about four hundred feet away. If staff determines that it is in the best interest of the city and for future serviceability, what I told Mr. McEwen on the phone, then obviously we would be required to put that hydrant in. I mean, fire safety is important to all of us. And, you know, I'm, I'm stubbing the water, I'm stubbing the sewer, uh, I'm doing everything that I can. We'll be building, uh, a ten-foot pathway, uh, along Cherry Lane, 'cause that is a multi-use corridor. And then this will be ten feet along here. So, we think we've got a good project and, uh, we've worked diligently to get to this point. And like I said, uh, we've got something that's approvable, buildable, and marketable. And I think that's, that's our goal. And that, and, and that's what we have here. We, the parcels unusually shaped, but we've done, I think, a better job than what was approved previously. And I ask that you support it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Love Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Becky, would you mind, um, like, can you point out where the school is? He mentioned that he'd prefer to not have any two-story homes, but it also, it looks like it's a pretty safe distance away.
Right.
After, yes, we'll, we'll ask for further detail after, um, she responds.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Roberts, um, I, I think I did ask Mr. McEwen for a site plan, and I don't think he sent me one.
I did not send you a site.
Yeah, he did not send me one. Um, I guess based, the only thing I can go off of is based on our phone conversations, that they would utilize this, this stub street here. And that's why it was in their best interest that I move it south, um, to obviously, um, retain as much of this area north of his home so that that school could be located in, right here. That's my understanding.
Madam Mayor.
I, I think, yes.
Sorry, follow-up. So it's, it's a, the school's a concept, it's not, or maybe I should reserve it for Mr. McEwen?
There, there was no site plan provided to me. I, I did ask, if you have a site plan, I'd be, you know, if you could send that to me, then I could input it into, to our plan and, and obviously look at it. But, but they hadn't gotten that far. I think, you know, his, his, his intent was to make sure infrastructure-wise, public street-wise, that what we're doing will facilitate the possibility that he could construct that Montessori school. And, and we're not opposed to that. And like I said, I've worked with him, you know, trying to accommodate his needs.
Thank you.
Uh, and I certainly would, would ask the property owner if he would like to, to weigh in, um, since the question was specific to your property.
William McEwen. Uh, the Montessori school is approximately right here. I apologize, I don't remember, uh, Becky asking me for a site plan right there, but, um, Ada County does have one, and so does the CDHC. But it's, it's right in here. And so, as, we'll extend this road out, um, do a turnaround for the, uh, fire department, and we'll have our school right here. Does he, does that clarify it for you guys? That's the plan anywhere. We're going through Ada County, obviously, with that.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I can't see.
I understand. Uh, you can't provide testimony from back there. You can come and, and wrap up your remarks.
We are currently running a Montessori school. We're just running it out of our, out of our current home, and we're working on getting another building.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Kent Blake and I live at forty-nine twenty West Cherry Lane.
Thank you.
So my, just one question was, I see the, the way the sub-street comes through, whoops, sorry. Uh, the sub, the substrate, street that comes through that where the sewer is to come down into these properties here, it looks like it would just come into, uh, my neighbor's property, but not into mine. Does, how does that work? I would have to come through his property to access that in case I ever wanted to go to the city and have sewer service?
Yeah, they stub it to the, um, edge of their property, and if redevelopment occurs, that development would bring it
To you.
To, to your own.
But if I were to develop or do something with my property before that, I would have no access to the sewer until the property next to me is developed. The way that, the way that substrate is, 'cause it's right on, on the other side of the borderline. Does that make sense what I'm saying? Right?
Well, I, I would, um,
So here's the borderline.
Need to have staff answer that question. Plant.
Could you point to your property again?
Okay, so my, my property is right here, and I'm seeing the borderline is right there.
Does it front Black Cat Road, any chance, or is it?
Black Cat's over here.
Yeah, I know. There's just this property right in there about where you're pointing that goes out to Black Cat, like right there.
That goes out to Black Cat, yes. So that's my property.
So if you front Black Cat Road, there's sewer existing in Black Cat that you could tie into at any time.
So I can go that way or the other way?
Yeah, correct.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Mr. McEwen, um, did you say that, that Ada County has a site plan that you've given them?
We're working with Ada County. I permitted, I submitted a site plan to CDHC for I permitted, I submitted a site plan to CDHC for the septic permit that we've just been approved for. And we've been talking with Ada County, and we're in the middle of having an architect draw it up for us right now.
So, so you do have a site plan that you've given to another stakeholder that's, that you're working with?
Yes.
I guess I'm confused, why, why wouldn't you just give one to Becky?
I don't remember her asking me for one, I certainly would have sent one over there. I do have a scanner and a computer, I would have been more than happy to send it. It was not, not an issue.
I, I would make our decision a little bit easier, we'd have more information to make a better decision as to...
And Councilman Burton, I'm, I, I don't remember her asking me for one, I certainly would have sent it over to her, she's been wonderful to work with.
Right, okay.
But I can tell you that it is approximately just north of the stubborn street that's, that's in there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Becky, any other comment? Oh, how about a fire hydrant?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yeah, in, in my conversations with Mr. McEwen, I asked him why he isn't requesting annexation, development to the city in Meridian.
I was actually kind of thinking the same thing myself.
Because I, I made the comment to him on the phone that we'll be stubbing sewer and water to him, and obviously, the city ordinance requires that you request annexation if you're contiguous in order to utilize those services. He indicated that it was his desire not to annex into Meridian, however he wants the benefit of the hydrant, but, you know, like I said, if fire safety is an issue, you know, I won't buck that. Obviously, you know, your staff will determine when we submit plans, where those hydrants go. What we show on the preliminary plat is just conceptual in nature and just meets your standard 400-foot offset. But as far as that hydrant location, if, if that is appropriate, then, you know, we would not object to that.
I'm kind of surprised that Central District Health approved a septic permit right next to an annex piece. Odd. Any questions for Becky? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, council, any further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we close the public hearing on item I-8A.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye?
I said it very softly.
Okay, all ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve H. 2018-0079, as presented with, including the waiver to, from the tiling of the two canals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 8A. Any discussion from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just to make sure that there's no confusion with anything, not requiring that any of the lots have to have single-family, or single-level, single-family, but not single-level homes.
This second agree?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 8J is under our community development department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
It's still evening, it's not morning yet.
We have had a big day. Before I get started, I just wanted to take a minute and just a couple of personal notes I wanted to throw out. I just wanted to, first of all, I wanted to just express my sincere appreciation for today's event, the, the first annual all-employee meeting. Feedback that I've received following that event was, is just amazing. I mean, our, our employees are stoked about it. So, kudos to you, kudos to the, to the senior leadership team. There was a lot of planning, a lot went into that, and I'm so glad you're here.
I'm so glad you're here, still.
Okay, and on a second note, I just wanted to, I wanted to just express my appreciation for your support, your continuing support for our evolution in the building department and, and community development. So, we're, we're making great headway. The hiring process is slow, but we've got a good team on board so far, and, and we look forward to filling out their roster and, and getting to where we all have put the, put the target. And so, we're having fun, and it's exciting.
I'm glad you're still having fun.
I keep reminding myself of that, so...
I think you were listening today.
Where we at, CJ?
I knew it wasn't a TI.
That looks better. Okay, so let's, let's launch into this. So this is the ground that we want to cover tonight in this presentation. I won't read these, but we'll, we'll touch on each of these topics as we go along. So the, the vision and principle, you know, it's continuing based on the vision statement we have for the city, our guiding principles. It's a new venture for the city, we're committed to building the best possible program we can. And again, you know, your support is, is so critical to that. Just a little bit of the history, status of our mechanical program. You know, we've, we've always historically contracted out these services for plan review and inspection services. As you know, in 2013, we, we conducted an RFQ and transitioned from a private company providing these services over to the public sector with the Idaho Division of Building Safety. On June 6th of this year, IDBS delivered notice of termination for the mechanical plan review and inspection program due to upcoming demands in their program and not being able to handle Meridian's volume, as well as the new programs that they are doing. Since, since that date, our contracts did expire on September 30th. We did negotiate a short-term contract with them to take us out through the end of the, the calendar year. Through that negotiation, they did reduce the number of inspections that they will perform for us. They set it at 50 mechanical inspections per day until the end of the year. However, with the progress that we're making, getting this conversion done, they have expressed some willingness to work with us. And so, we've got a good partnership with them, and they are, they are at least willing to take a look at that. We immediately, when we got the termination, we started the process of, of doing an RFQ. Again, similar to what we did in building and electrical, we wanted to have a Plan B. We wanted to be able to have a, a safety net there. So unfortunately, we did not get any responses for mechanical inspection. We got one respondent for our RFQ, and their response was for the planning review portion of the, of the task. We are working, we've already worked up the master agreement and the task order for that contractor to provide the plan review services. We just need to get past this step tonight to get, to get a budget approved so that we can move forward. So again, no RFQ response for mechanical inspection services, therefore, we're in front of you for this budget amendment. We wanted to give you just a, a little bit of a snapshot here of our permit volume. There's, there's three years' worth of volume, kind of gives you an idea of how many per day our inspectors are, are dealing with. 2018, you know, we've had a, we've had a very strong year, they're conducting about 51 per day. DBS has used five FTEs to serve Meridian in those three years. Our proposal right now, as we stand, is for one mechanical inspector supervisor and four mechanical inspectors. We've talked, we've talked a little in the past about the organization as a whole in community development. So this is a, this is a snapshot of our current state organizational chart for, for our department. I'm calling this Phase 1 Community Development Reorg because with this budget amendment, we are proposing a couple of, a couple of adjustments to help take away some of this, this flatness we have in the organization, in the level that, that this arrow is pointing to. The adjustments we're asking for are to take two, we have two existing vacant positions that are funded, and we want to enhance those positions and put them into supervisory roles so that we can help get a little more vertical span of oversight in the department. So, the area, again, in this, this slide, you see, these are all the individuals that are under the building official. He has direct oversight and responsibility for, for them. With our proposed model, it flattens out to four individuals. We've taken the permit technician staff, who not only serves building, but they also serve the land development division, economic development, as well as planning. So we have, our vision is to create an administrative services supervisor that would then have oversight of the permit technicians, since they are more global in the department, as well as the existing admin two and an admin one that we have in the, in the department, and the customer support specialist that's, that's right here as well. So, again, the budget amendment is for this position to add to what we already have approved for budget. And then it's also to take our existing permit tech two position and enhance it to be a true supervisor. Right now, the approved position for a permit tech two is a lead role. In a lead role, they don't have, they don't have, they don't have hiring and firing role, they don't have, they don't do performance evaluations. They are there for, you know, the guidance day-to-day, they're the person that, that you can go to to ask, ask questions and that sort of thing, they're just a lead role. So, that is, again, Phase 1 of the reorg. We do plan on coming back with a, a bigger look at the whole department to help take away some of the other areas where we have very flat oversight in the department. So, this slide, I just wanted to give you a snapshot of, I took Todd Lavoie's projections. This is the historical and the, and the projected mechanical revenue in, in the blue line, you see? And as we've talked before, you know, finance does project that we are going to have some sort of a turn down sometime 2019, 2020. It's a crystal ball thing, I wish we knew how deep that was going to go, whether it would be drastic, or whether it's going to be more of just a market adjustment type of a taper off. But what I'm also showing on this graph is, the dashed orange line is the expense that we've had with Idaho Division of Building Safety up to where we currently are. And then with our ongoing expense for FTEs, that's what you see in gray. And so, carry that on out. This is, as you know, a hybrid model. We, we are proposing to hire FTEs for the inspection services, but contract out the plan review. So, you know, we feel that the, the FTEs certainly are fairly static expense. The, the expense for, the contract for plan review obviously is going to fluctuate with the permit volume. And so, it, it kind of builds us a little bit of a buffer, because as things start tapering off, their expense also drops. So, that, I think, is, is something that is going to help us in the long run. Last slide is just a, a summary of our budget amendment proposal. You see the ongoing and the one-time expenses for FTEs and vehicles and technology, and the total amount in the lower right corner for the, the full budget amendment. So, with that being said, I, I'll stand for any questions, and, you know, we'll ask for your approval of the following budget item, or budget amendment, agenda item.
Thank you, Bruce. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Sit back down, just one. Is the plan review that would be contracted out different than plan examiners? If I heard you right, you said?
You used two different terminologies.
It is, you indicated plan and review would be contracted out. This org, this org chart shows employees as, doing plan examiners, is that a different role?
It will, it will be contracted out until we get employees in-house, as I understand it.
Correct, correct.
So, Madam Mayor, so when I look to the, the column to the right of the yellow, what they're all described as assorted plans examiners?
Okay, so the plans examiners, in this chart, that is building plans examiners, not the mechanical?
Building and electrical.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then what you see in yellow is the inspection crew?
Right.
The inspectors that we're asking for in the, in the budget amendment. So, the plans examining for building and electrical, yes, it's different than
It's in-house.
The plan review that would be, that we're currently contracting out under short-term contract for the mechanical. I hope that makes sense. It gets, it gets kind of confusing.
So, Madam Mayor, is, is it, is it accurate to say that plan review for building and electrical will be in-house, or is in-house now, plan review for mechanical is out of house, but will someday soon become in-house as well?
That's...
And then be added to this org chart somewhere else?
You're, you're spot on.
Okay.
The building and electrical are, are in-house, we're building that team now.
Gotcha.
We are supplementing, as we are trying to fill the roster, we are supplementing with, coincidentally, the same contractor that submitted for doing plan review for mechanical. They're supplementing. But as we build our team and take off more of the load, we're sending less and less to them. So we're going to phase them out for the building electrical. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Well then, we will ask for any questions to item 8K, which is the Community Development Department. Well, then, we will ask for any questions to item 8K, which is the Community Development Mechanical Evolution Plan Budget Amendment, not to exceed. Any questions? Mr. Burton.
I move that we approve the Community Development Mechanical Evolution Plan Budget Amendment not to exceed $727,000, $108.
Can you say that?
$727,000, that's it. $727,000.
Thank you.
So late.
The second agrees with that. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9A is ordinance 18-1764A. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian, ordinance number 18-1764A, and ordinance file H. 2017-0104, Movado Green Subdivision, for the rezone of two parcels of land located in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 21, Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, City of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification from CG, General Retail and Service Commercial Zoning District 2, R15, Medium High Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
And that there's no one who would like to see it here it read in its entirety, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
We approve ordinance 18-1764A with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9A. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Anything under item 10, future meeting topics? Okay, just a heads up on the Veterans Day Ceremony, that's on Sunday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Rock of Honor. And City Hall is closed on Monday, November 12. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Great enthusiasm. I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes.